We're live, Mayor.
Hello, I would like to call to order the city council meeting on March 5, 2024. This is the first time we've been back on the floor, so we're excited to do this. It's been awhile, and hopefully things will go smoothly. I feel a little discombobulated. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting. Community members are welcome to join us either in person or remotely through Zoom or by telephone. Clerk, will you please call a roll for both the city council and the Transportation Commission?
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Falcone.
Here.
Councilmember Pascal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Curtis.
Here.
Transportation Commissioner Chair Brian McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Vu.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Ballmer- Ballmer Ruggen. Commissioner Antrim.
Here.
Commissioner Trexel. Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Thank you. Our study session tonight is on two topics. The first is a special joint meeting with the Transportation Commission. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this gorgeous evening. The second is a transportation strategic plan update. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at 7:30. City Manager.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor, and welcome, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to have you all here. So as the Mayor mentioned, we have two items. There will be an end to the joint session, but as I think you all know, the Commission is welcome to stay and attend the second item, which is the transportation strategic plan update as well, so we welcome you to continue with us. So both presentations are actually going to be made by Doug McIntyre, our Transportation Manager, so he's going to kick us off with the transportation work program.
Thank you, City Manager. And just one note before we start, we have staff behind me to support Q and A as well, so we have Kim Scrivener and Victoria Kobach, who are part of the transportation planning team, so we may pull them in for some Q and A support if we need to, so thank you. Again, my name is Doug McIntyre. I'm the Transportation Manager in Public Works. Very excited to be here. This is my first joint meeting with the Commission and the council, so hopefully we have a good discussion. I also neglected to introduce Chuck Dever, our Director in Public Works, Interim Director in Public Works. Thanks, Chuck. Chuck's here to support as well. Tonight, we have a presentation on the 2024-2025 Transportation Commission Work Plan. We're going to start with some background and some quick context, and then talk about what we hope to get from the discussion, and then identify next steps, and then we'll open it up for a full discussion. To begin, so I think it's good to kind of set it up, the mission of the Transportation Commission. So the Commission is an advisory body made up of appointed officials, and they advise the city council and staff. And so the mission out of the municipal code actually states that the Transportation Commission's job is to advise the Public Works Department, City Manager, and City Council in leading the city's efforts to create and maintain a transportation system that enhances the economic, social, and environmental quality of life in our city now and into the future. And through the work plan, I think we're demonstrating how we're achieving those goals. Also codified in the municipal code with a citation of Title III, Chapter 45, Section 040, we are required to establish a two-year work plan, and that gets adopted every other year via a joint meeting. The Commission has been discussing this for a few meetings now, so we started in the November meeting. We continued the discussion into the December and January meetings, and we had some really good input, and I think at the end of the day, we came up with a really solid work program that reflects what we all hope to achieve over the next two years. At the January meeting, the Commission did unanimously recommend approval by the council at a future meeting, and so that's why we're here tonight. One of the more substantive changes that we've made, so I should say that we've had that we've been working off of the 22-23 work plan, and one of the changes we made moving into the next two-year work plan is adding some more clarity around the task and the role of the Commission in that task. And so we actually borrowed some from the King County Regional Transit Committee. They use a task structure or role structure that's outlined on the screen, starting with action. So action items are those that actually require a recommendation from the Commission to the council. That's kind of the highest level of responsibility of the Commission. The monitoring tasks are items that are kind of under development, and we still need Commission input on, and so that's not obviously everything, but it is a large body of the substantive work that we do. And then, of course, we have context items, which are more informative in nature. They are likely to be shorter presentations, just keeping the Commission in the loop. And I wanted to be really clear about which ones are context, because it kind of helps us understand what level of detail we need to get into. And then, just as somewhat of an aside, but we have administrative items, so things like electing a chair and a vice chair, and of course, developing the work plan, so things that are just done by typical operational reasons. So obviously, you can't see the sunscreen. I'll bring up a PDF in a moment here, but to tee up the discussion, we're hoping to understand from the council if there's anything that we've missed. Are there gaps in our list? Also, we want to talk about the schedule. We've obviously put some good thought into coming up with a quarter-by-quarter schedule, but there are things that will change over the year, the two years, and we'll want to be responsive as best we can. Additionally, we did prioritize the list, so we have tier-one projects that we that sort to the top, and then down to the lower priority projects at number five. So if there are any thoughts about changes there, that would be great to hear as well. So after we hear the discussion in a moment, we will incorporate as much of the input as we can into a revised version of the 2024-2025 work plan. That work plan will go to the council on the consent agenda on the April 2 meeting, so the next regular meeting of the council for council consideration and approval. With that, I will bring up the PDF. If you give me one second here. While I'm doing this, are there any questions about any of the slides?
Counsel, any questions?
Okay. Are we good on this here? Okay. Good. Okay.
Yeah, I might kind of just provide a little bit of extra background. Doug, you did a fantastic job kind of giving the context, what we're doing, and then some of the key changes from before, and I think definitely some of the changes here in the format, we felt pretty strongly as a Commission. There's been a lot of change on membership of the Commission since our last work plan was developed, and I think there were some really good conversations that came about of how do we set our priorities? Do we clearly identify them, both for ourselves, but also anyone new that's coming on the Commission, or for the public to understand what the Commission is working on? And so some of those that are really more formatting changes, we felt were really important to kind of advance the work plan, to be a little bit more user-friendly for anyone that's picking it up. But I think, you know, as Doug highlighted, some of the effectively applying a priority and a status, kind of a category for each of these items, if there's any input from members of council, if, you know, we've hit the mark, or if you feel like some of these need to shift a little bit, I'd definitely be very interested to hear your input.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, discussion? Alting? Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you. You know, I'm glad we're having this meeting. I hope we have them at regular intervals and get your feedback. Two comments. One, I'm really interested in your thoughts on the stationary plan and how that's going. And two, you have a youth representative, and I'd be interested to know how your communication with the senior community is going, or if there is any communication. And I'd be interested in the Transportation Commission perhaps considering having a liaison or a senior representative on your Transportation Commission, because one of the most, the concerns I hear from seniors in Kirkland are often centered around transportation. And if we have a youth representative on your Commission, it would seem to make sense to possibly have a senior representative as well. Thank you.
City Manager, would that require any?
So there's no limitation to the age of any Commissioner who's appointed? If you wanted to specifically call out, for example, that a member of the senior council was a new member of the Commission, that would take an ordinance change, but otherwise, you can do it without any change?
Maybe this is something to explore. I like the idea, perhaps it's a liaison in some way. Transportation Commission reports to the senior council and gets feedback or something like that, so let's talk about it. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Arnold.
A couple of things. First, really excited about this work plan. Coming into it, when you hear about a work plan, the big questions that I had were, you know, what are we doing about safety? And I love the fact you've got the speed limit study happening this year, the Cross Kirkland Corridor Action Plan, and getting to how we fulfill the vision of the Cross Kirkland Corridor is part of your 2025 work plan, which is very exciting. And then eScooters micro mobility, the fact that that's there is also very exciting. So, you know, certainly this work plan checks all the boxes of the big things I was interested in, so I'm excited about that. The couple of things for context that are worth looking into, one is the council's Transportation Work Group had a briefing on the K-line last Friday. It's on a, the study to do the K-line is on an accelerated schedule. It's funded through the county this year, and the county's going to have a challenging budget year in the future, but they have got the capability of getting through the study and feasibility and getting to something that may be grantable by the federal government. But the final decisions on how that is coming together with routing through Kirkland and Bellevue and other things would be important context for your work, so I hope you can, there's a way to get the briefing into that, given the county's plans there. The second thing that might be interesting context is the Mayor and I had our regular meeting with the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair this morning, and as we were asking them about the comprehensive plan, they were very much wanting to make sure that transit and transportation were linked. I know from your all's work that land use and transportation close link is important, and so maybe there's some opportunities for at least some informal coordination between the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission and this Commission as Kirkland 2044 comes together, because we'd love for you all to coordinate in what anyway happens versus that coordination happening by the time both plans get to council. Thank you.
Good input. Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Sorry. Really, you know, I've been here the longest. So I forget the most. Anyway, again, just referencing Deputy Mayor's comments, the missing middle, I think, is going to be a really important discussion to have that incorporates both the Planning Commission and Transportation Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, thank you for developing this work plan and all the work that has gone into that, but also all the work that you're embarking on as a Commission. What I wanted to sort of underscore, it's here, but I just wanted to underscore it, is the regional transit work, and I appreciate seeing a contextual item, regional transit and transportation projects, a transit study, which is an action item, coupled with the 85th Street stationary plan implementation monitoring. I think those all go together. One thing that, as a, as the new appointee to the Regional Transit Committee, but also in my work with the East Side Transportation Partnership over the last four years, one of the things I keep emphasizing is for our transit agencies, which are not us, to look at the complete community that we are trying to encourage to develop in the city of Kirkland, and transit is such an important element of that. Other forms of mobility are also key, but the regional transit is the one we have the least control over. And so, again, just emphasizing when it comes to the rapid ride K-line, when it comes to what I'm calling the return of service, and the return of transit, greater transmit mobility to Kirkland post-COVID, that we as a city are really looking at the investments we can make to ensure that those regional transit investments are being made by the agencies. And one of the things I hear when I raise this as a concern is, you know, one of the factors that the regional transit agencies consider, Metro in particular, is the infrastructure that we built to make transit effective and efficient. So I just super, just want to emphasize, super important work, and it dovetails really well with some of the work, not just me, but some of the other members of the council do on regional. And, and just underscoring, I think it was Deputy Mayor Arnold, the intersection between the housing that we are doing and, and transportation, multimodal transportation, transit, they go hand in hand. They're all part of the complete community that we want to see in Kirkland. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you so much. I, you know, like others have shared, I'm thrilled to be having a joint meeting with each of you tonight. It's fun to hear about what you're working on, and it's really exciting to just know all the hard work you're putting into this, which we already know, but to have it highlighted and to say that to your face is just a big thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. You know, I really appreciated the comments of my colleagues, you know, talking about collaboration, talking about regional work, and just to add on to that as well, so many of these, I can see collaboration with like Washington School District as well, and so I just encourage you to continue conversations with both elected and staff at the school district. You know, I can imagine micro mobility, the transit study, Greenways, you know, other items on here specifically would be really helpful to have conversations with them to make sure that, that you're working together, as well as the work of some other organizations, such as Sustainability Ambassadors, right, that are working on efforts to increase, you know, the city is partnering with, and partnering with the school district on increasing youth metro ridership, and so youth transit ridership. So just encourage you to continue those conversations and make sure that, I know our staff does a fantastic job, but as Commissioners as well, making those connections and having those conversations, I think, could be really fruitful to the work you're doing.
Councilmember Pascal.
All right. Thank you. So just a little bit of context for those Transportation Commissioners that I don't talk to that often. Remember, it was about, it was 22 years ago, I moved to Kirkland, no, 23 years ago, I moved to Kirkland, I saw an opening on the Transportation Commission. I was like, oh, that sounds interesting. I applied. Council surprisingly appointed me, and here I am. So, you know, just keep that in mind, you know, you never know where, where things will lead, and I never thought I would be a city council member, but that Transportation Commission kind of opened my horizons. You know, the transportation strategic plan, it's a really important document that guides all our decisions, and so I'm glad to see that front and center as part of your work program. Don't take that for granted. I think there's a lot of policies, priorities, strategies that you can weigh in on, and that's going to help us into the future. One of the things that I do want to raise, and I've raised this in the past to others, so I want to raise it with the Transportation Commission, is I do want us to really think about how we can have some early check-ins on development of the capital improvement program and what those projects might entail. There are some projects that I think we have an idea of what we want to do, but we don't know the specifics, and so we get into the project and we start realizing that there's different alternatives and different ideas, and I want to have that early check-in, and that's something that we sometimes do and sometimes don't do. And I'd like to make it more, like a more formalized process, so that we can avoid situations down the road that, that do lead to project cost escalations or questions from the community. A good example is, a recent, good example is the Greenway. The store to shores?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I was going to call sea to shores, but yeah. So that would be, that would be something just to think about that I've been advocating for is how could we define an early check-in process that the Commission could be involved in, that the Commission could weigh in and weigh in on, and that they could provide some feedback to the council? We don't have time to do that. That's, that's the issue. And that goes along with, I think, the CIP process here. You have two check-ins in the third quarters of each, of each year. I do hear sometimes when I'm talking to Commissioners about wanting to have more involvement in the CIP, so I'm looking for, for your ideas on, on how to do that, how to do that efficiently, how to provide constructive feedback on that. So I think that's good. If there's more that needs to be done there, I'm looking for your, your ideas. I want to address the speed limit policy. I'm glad that we're looking at that. I think you all know that vehicle speeds are the greatest contributor to the severity of collisions that occur, especially with those that are walking or biking or rolling. And I, I think it's good to look at the speed limits. I think, though, that it has to be combined with other physical traffic calming measures, and so those are, go hand in hand, so you can't just do one without the other. And so that's, I was really proud of the city for, for changing the traffic calming policies that we had on the books for, I think, almost 30 years on when we would implement speed, speed humps and other physical traffic calming devices, that we've made it more easier to do that based upon safety as kind of the forefront. I just want to kind of continue to, to push on that and make sure that we're, we're right at the, that we're continuing to do things that I think are cutting edge around reducing vehicle speeds across the city on arterials and on local streets, not just local streets, on arterials as well. And then finally, I want to follow up on, on Councilmember Black's discussion about transit. That's been something that's been at the forefront of my mind for awhile, and I'm going to use kind of a word that, that I feel is very fitting of what we're seeing in Kirkland, is we are seeing an erosion of bus service in Kirkland, and that has been ongoing for years, and it's becoming a point to where it's, it's impacting that type of transit service to be a viable service for those that want to ride the bus, those that are transit-dependent, those that are mobility impaired, that we are seeing reduced frequencies, we're, we're seeing increased transfers, we're seeing reduced span of service, meaning that the, that the bus service isn't, doesn't go for more hours of the day, and that's having a pretty significant impact on bus ridership. And so what do we do about it? I think a transit plan is a great, a transit study, as it's called here, is, you know, one of those things, but I see that out in 2025. I really think that we need a transit policy on how we actually communicate and message our needs as a community to the greater King County electeds and populations. So it's more than just a plan, it's more, it's more a strategy on how we're, what are we doing as a community to promote transit usage and how that's an integral part of our land use policy, and how we're going above and beyond other communities in King County. That's what we need to be communicating, and we need to be all, be saying the same thing. We're not. We need to be all on the same page as to what we want and why we're different, and why we're not just seen as, oh, they're Kirkland, they don't need as much transit service as, as these other areas. And that's what I heard when I was on the King County Regional Transit Committee. So, Councilmember Black, I, maybe you'll be hearing those things during your time, but that was, well, that was one thing that I heard, so those are things that I hope to hear from the Commission over time. Thank you.
Doug, do you have any response to any of that?
Yeah, lots of, lots of thoughts. Yeah, thank you for the input, everybody. That was, that's really good. I think we are on the right track. I think it sounds like it's pretty close to the mark, and with regard to transit, transit study, we are showing that in '25, it's an action item in the TSP right now, and so we want to get that adopted and then go out for that help. But in the meantime, the discussion about transit and exactly what you talked about, transit strategies and transit advocacy, we will build that into our TSP draft, so that, that is the plan. We do have policies that support that, and so I think the whole package hopefully gets at that, and, and with the transit study, we'll know exactly how, what the problem is, how big of a problem, where, and how we can advocate. So hopefully, that, that can really help us make some, some good improvements in that direction. I did want to also note, the K-line came up, Deputy Mayor Arnold brought up the K-line. Under number four on the screen, regional transit and transportation projects as context, we do, we do intend to bring K-line briefing in kind of a high-level manner to the Commission under number four. That's sort of an implementation of larger policy efforts, and so I think good to keep the Commission in the loop on that. And then, missing middle housing, HB 1110, I wanted to note that we are coordinating with our planning and building team. In fact, when we developed this, we did check in with both Adam and Ally on, on making sure that we're saying the right things and not getting too far out in front of each other, and vice versa. They had their work plan, I know, got adopted a short while ago, and we did review that as well. So there is some collaboration there, so there's a lot of overlap, for sure. And I think that was, those were my thoughts right off, off the bat.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Just one more comment, because I think what Councilmember Pascal just was talking about is way too important for us not to recognize the political nature that it's going to take in order to us to actually affect some changes. So this should be in every conversation with Claudia Balducci. It should be in every conversation at the federal level with Susan Del Benny or anybody else, but we need to do something in order to make the 85th Street corridor work.
Yeah. Did you, City Manager, I felt you moving over there.
I just wanted to first see if there's any other comments by council members before I-
And then I was going to invite my Commissioners.
But on, on the work plan itself, just to wrap up the administrative piece, because we want to bring this back to the council for action at the next meeting, I've heard some clarifications, but I haven't heard any significant changes to the plan itself. I think clarifying the K-line and a few other issues, but were there any other specific amendments or things that you wanted to suggest beyond the elaboration that you did?
Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't sure whether to bring this up now or later in the second part of our study session, but, because it may or may not go through the Transportation Commission. I'm not sure how, what the process would be like, but I was just curious from staff, if you could kind of speak to the complete street ordinance, you know, I, when I look at that, I think it was last updated in 2016. There's certainly language in there that I think can and should be updated, really to align with our current values as a city, and so I think it's worth to take a look at that, and I'm just wondering where that would fit in with the plans that we're talking about tonight, and whether that needs to be something that would be additional, or whether it could be folded into one of the other items.
Yeah, I think just to answer that question, I think it would need to be its own item on the work plan. There is enough work around that that would warrant, I think, a full review as a standalone item. You're correct. I believe, if I recall, originally adopted in 2006 and updated in 2016, and the reason for updating it is to incorporate more of the current language and the current best practices. And so I did actually look at that, in fact, today, and was thinking it might be something that we could look at in the near future. One thing I will say is, in the work plan, we tried really hard to do our best to accomplish as much as we can with our staff resources as well, and make sure we have workloads that match up with the work plan. And so if, if we do add things, I do also want to have a conversation about if we can shift some other things maybe later, or just to make sure that we can do a good job on, on the task that we add, and, but certainly complete streets update. It shouldn't be, I think, too heavy of a lift, but we would want to involve, you know, the right folks.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense with the timing with our, you know, all these plans and our comp plan updates, and they're all related, right? Like I can, I, well, for those of you who haven't read it, I was really proud to read in it that in 2006, I believe we were the first jurisdiction in the state of Washington to adopt a complete street ordinance, so that was something to really be proud of. And then it was updated in 2016, like you mentioned, you know, there are things, there are probably potentially multiple things, you know, I think of the language where we talk about accommodating, you know, active transportation, I'd like to see us say prioritize, you know, some language change that might better align with the direction that we're going, so just to give- So just to give you folks a flavor. So I don't think, we don't make motions now, but I'm just potentially saying that that could be something that we might like to see, that I would like to see back on the draw, added to the draft work.
And I feel like I need some head nods or some indication from council if they also support that idea. Count, Deputy Mayor?
Certainly support the idea of looking at the, and updating the ordinance. Not sure that I am in a position to say, okay, what gets bumped off of this? And I'm wondering about, is this something that could be an implementation action in the transportation strategic plan where we figure out the timing of this later?
Councilmember Sweet agrees with that. Anyone else have some thoughts?
And that works for me. I just want it on paper somewhere that we plan to update it, because I think it needs to be updated.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think, I think it's a good, it's a good point. It's definitely something that should be looked at. I just want to, I want to, as we go through the transportation strategic plan, I want to see all the different things that we need to be really focusing on.
Before we prioritize?
Yeah, because there's, there's a lot of different, there's going to be a lot of different issues. Complete streets kind of plays into it, but, but I think we've received letters and informa, and other emails from other folks about, you know, a whole host of, of really kind of deep policy issues. And so we, we want to make sure we're giving all of them their due. You know, just making sure that we're considering all of them as we pri-
Thank you. And Councilmember Falcone did say she wasn't sure if it should come up during this or during the transportation strategic plan. So thank you. So we'll talk about it in 20 minutes. So Chair Commissioners, is there any questions, comments you want to make? You're here, you have, you have our attention.
I'll, I'll get us started off here. I, it was great to hear all of your input. I think we have, really, we're aligned on the goals that we have for the city with transportation. We've had a lot of discussions in the commission, especially as we've been looking at the strategic plan, particularly focusing on kind of the, the regional and transit elements that were coming up from a lot of people here. And I think that is a big focus. And we are very interested in having some of those representatives from, you know, metro, sound transit, kind of coming before the commission. And Councilmember Pascal, I was also enjoying your thoughts about formalizing kind of a process for CIP projects to come before the commission, just kind of as a way to help inform the decision-making process at an early stage when it may be more cost-effective or even beneficial for, for projects. I would be very interested in having that kind of be more of a regular process. And I know we've been very focused on, the strategic plan is our top priority. That's been kind of a, a big agenda item for us for almost the past year now. And I know we're probably going to pivot more as staff time opens up and there are agendas open up for that. But the last thing I'll note before I pass it on to any other commissioners is that we know that we have a lot of topics to cover. Transportation, we're all passionate about it. We want to kind of do the best we can. And I, I just want to also recognize everyone on the commission here. We've, we've pushed city staff really hard. Doug, you've been a fantastic like partner in all of this, trying to get everything together. And Kim and Victoria as well, who are here tonight. I think they've done a great job. And I know with our work plan, we've actually had talks about kind of having extra meetings if city staff can support it, to be able to get as much through. I know we're, we're trying to cover as many topics as possible to kind of provide the best benefit and, and the best input to city staff and the council that we can from the commission.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Chair?
I'd like to echo what Brian said, our chair. You know, I think it's great to hear from, from you all, because I think it's, it's reflected on the work that we've been trying to, trying to work on, on the TSP. And that's been reflected in that. And I, hats off to Doug and Kim and Victoria in terms of making that reality. I think we've been focusing this past year really much more on policy, right? This past fall, on policy. And so the implementation is not quite there yet for us. And one of the topics came out about transit. We were kind of like, well, we make policies, but at the end of the day, it's kind of like, well, we're missing a good partner in the room, right? Sound transit in King County Metro. And we're, you know, we're talking about bus shelters. And that's the only thing that we have, really have infrastructure-wise, you know, here and there. But I, I think that's something, you know, we, we hope that from a political standpoint, that there is more push on that front, because I think we do seem as, we bring it up all the time. And, you know, we're, we're kind of transit, you know, AJ's a big transit person and so forth. And we feel kind of powerless on our end. We can make all these policies and all these proclamations, but we don't seem to get a lot of traction. I think there's one, two aspects of it, right? Service cuts rather than infrastructure. We kind of focus a lot on the infrastructure that we can control on our end, but, you know, someone else is providing the service. And if we can somehow get that piece of the puzzle, because, you know, we, we feel, I hear my neighbors, you know, like our bus routes in front of our house, you know, are being cut and so forth. So, and we feel kind of powerless on, I, I feel personally more powerless on that front from the commission's side. My TSP and everything like that, I think we're all congruent. I think we're a very walkable transit, you know, kind of community. But we're missing that little piece as well on our end.
Thank you. Councilmember DeBolt? Or Commissioner DeBolt?
I wanted to follow up on the comments that Councilmember Pascal said about check-ins on CIP, early check-ins on CIP projects and just the implementation. And kind of tie that to all the policies that we spend so much time talking about, because we're certainly seeing instances of projects going in that didn't follow policy. So I would just really like the opportunity to check in on projects earlier and make sure that they're following our policy. It's like we spend a lot of time on policy and then it's just really disappointing when we're proud of the policies we put together and then the, the projects don't. I think the example on, over by Kirkland Urban, that bike lane that just in, just ends at a curb or into a parking spot. And it's just really unfortunate that that kind of thing can happen. So yeah, I just wanted to echo that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, Doug, do you have what you need?
I believe so, yes, thank you.
I just want to thank you guys, and you've already heard it. But truly, I, we get emails about transportation more than anything, that it, it just impacts everybody's daily lives all day. So thank you for your work that you're doing. And we are going to transition into the TSP and you are welcome to stay if you'd like. So. Um, yeah, no. We have more staff.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for really looking forward to this conversation.
All right.
A lot of work going on.
We are concluding the Joint Transportation Commission meeting and moving to the transportation strategic plan update. And Doug McIntyre will introduce his staff. And City Manager, do you have anything to add?
Perfect.
Thank you, yes. So the second half of the study session will be dedicated to the transportation strategic plan. We recognize the, the packet was a lot of materials. We're trying to cover a lot of ground here, but we're making a lot of good progress on, on the work and getting towards closer to a draft plan. There's a lot of parallel processes, I think we've talked about with the commission quite a bit in the past, that some of them are merging right now. And so one of the big things for tonight is the projects list. And so this was the first chance that we'll, we'll have with the council to talk about that. So really looking forward to that. That's hopefully the main, main focus of the discussion. And we'll take input tonight and continue to refine the list. So this is our first cut at the list. We'll continue to refine, continue to improve and continue to incorporate comments as we get them. So with that, I will introduce both Kim Scrivner, our project manager on this very hefty lift of a project, as well as our prime consultant, Fred, Fred Young with Parametrics. He's here to support a couple of the slides as well as some Q and A, so.
Thank you.
Turned over to-
Yeah. But before you get started, I sent Doug an email today and Kimberly and everyone, I want you to hear it from me. This was one of the most comprehensive, well-put-together packets I've ever seen. And thank you for that. It was a lot of material to go through, but really well organized. And I appreciate that you went back and put in the council comments so that we didn't have to go back and listen to what we said last time with response. So well done, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I do want to just call out the team, really the huge team effort. As I mentioned, Kim is our, is our lead on this project, but we also get a lot of support from the rest of the team, including Victoria Kovacs, who's taking notes for us right now. But also our traffic engineers, our CIP folks, planning folks. We've, we've talked to a lot of others in the city. So this is quite a collaborative effort, so just thank you.
All right. So today, as, as you noted, Mayor Curtis, thank you. And, you know, it's nice to see everybody. There is a lot of material to cover. While I welcome comments, we would welcome comments on all of the materials, including the goals and policies. One of our heavy lift tonight and now in our schedule is, is looking at our project, our project list. And so that is one of the, that is really the key component that we're going to focus on today. But as we get into our discussion, I'm really happy to have your comments on all of those components. We're going to be going through, well, we'll just get into it. Let's move on. We have been working very closely with the Transportation Commission pretty much every single meeting. Also presented to the Planning Commission and we had a joint twice and had a joint meeting with them once with the planning and the Transportation Commission. But our, our Transportation Commission has been really, really focused on this work for a majority of their meetings and even some, some, for some of their meetings, their whole meetings. So we've, we've spent hours with them. Really want to, now that everyone is here today, just really want to thank you all. And then appreciate Mayor Curtis mentioning the, the council comments. We did want to make sure that you all could, you know, be able to make sure that you are heard and that, and how we're applying the comments that we've received. Just as a, as a reminder, the transportation plan is a standalone document. But it also, so it has two functions. One of those is being the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And so a majority of that, the goals, the policies and the project list, the primary content that goes into our comprehensive plan, we're working hand in hand with our planning team. There, the, the transportation plan itself does provide us the opportunity to have a lot more context and detail into it. We, as I mentioned, what we, I, we really are, our heavy lift right now is putting together our fiscally constrained 20-year project list that goes into the capital facilities plan in the, in the comprehensive plan. And so that's a requirement we need to, we need to put together that list. The, what we're, and what we're focused on now is looking at projects that support our future growth. So as we evaluate our, you know, future growth, we're looking at the transportation projects that support that system. That includes our growth centers such as the 85th Station area, but it also includes kind of other elements of how growth is applied throughout the city, whether that's along transit corridors or other, or in other places. We also have projects that are already funded or partially funded. And so we're not, as we start to talk about projects that are being prioritized, those that we've already committed to, those get a green light because we've already committed to them. And then we're looking at prioritizing our projects. And let's move on, because let's, let's talk about what that looks like. We, we have put together a list of projects that has taken quite a lot of work. The city has done a ton of work to, to put together and to really reconcile a lot of the, the planning efforts that have happened since the 2015 plan update. And, you know, I, I think this is a, a great product that we can show from our previous plans. Because since our 2015 plan, we have done our active transportation plan, our Safe Route School Plan. We've updated our transit implementation plan. We've done all of the, all of this work. And so this is like accumulation of all of these things that we said we were going to do in 2015. And we, we've actually done a lot of those projects, but at the same time, there are a lot of projects that we're planning on. In that process, there are some overlaps. And so this, this example on the screen is one example of that. You know, we, we worked really hard to make sure that we're reconciling overlaps, but also places where there might be a little bit of a conflict. And so I think that on Market Street, northbound Q jump is a great example of one place where we, in our transit implementation plan, we, we talked about putting a northbound transit lane. In our active transportation plan, we talked about a protected bike lane. And as we talked with our engineering staff, as we, and our team, we, it, it's the recommendation in this plan to, to put a northbound transit Q jump, similar to the southbound Q jump that we have already implemented in coordination with King County Metro. That's, I, I, I don't want to, I, I will brag on behalf of Kirkland, because Metro does cite the, the southbound Q jump as one of their projects that has really great outcomes in terms of transit impacts, in terms of speed reliability. And so this is one of those compromises. So just one example, there are many of them in terms of how we're reconciling projects. Let's move on. We went to, out to the community with our very long list of projects. One thing I neglected to mention with the 450 projects, those, our project list did, wasn't just from planning, from our previous planning activities. One thing that we have done is we have what's called a suggestive project from the community. And when that happens, we go through and do, and conduct an engineering review and consider everything that we hear. And that's what we're doing with these projects, or excuse me, these comments. And so we, we've gone through every single comment. So for all of you, particular audience that submitted comments, we've read through every single one. And they, they do mean a lot to us. The, we had over 1,200 people provide comments to us. The, the comments were applied through very, a person could select a project and put a thumbs up, a thumbs down, or provide a, and/or provide a comment. They didn't necessarily have to put a thumbs up or thumbs down to provide a comment. And then, or if we were missing something, there are kind of unique comments that people were able to apply or to submit. So we are summarizing those themes. You do have that information in your, in the council packet. Just to kind of limit the number of slides today, I'm not going to get into the theme so much today. But we, we hear a lot about pedestrian safety. Safety is pretty much our biggest theme in terms of what, what we hear from the community. It's layered into a couple of different categories on the themes. And we are looking at potential new projects, as I mentioned. And then also, what we've also heard a lot about are what we would consider our service requests. So as people suggest, you know, reach out to us on our, in our day-to-day work about a side distance, there's a stop sign. I can't see when I turn around this corner, they're speeding on my street. There are a number of those and we're going to be putting that into our, into our kind of day-to-day operations. We won't be able to have the same kind of- We won't be able to have the same kind of response level, like level of response is it for people that might email us directly. But we do, as I mentioned, we, we have read every single comment, and these will, kind of the service request will get into the queue. So one example of a new potential project is a sidewalk gap. And so, you know, we've talked quite a lot about sidewalk gaps in our, in the plan and in our community, and in particular along transit corridors. And so this is just one example of a gap that we heard from the community that would be considered for the project. We, we did, as noted, we've been working very, very closely with the Transportation Commission. And one of the things that we discussed with them at our last meeting with the Transportation Commission was how, how are we going to decide which projects we're going to put in our capital facilities plan? We have, as I mentioned, we have 450 projects in a list. And one of the things that we had discussed internally and that we brought to the Transportation Commission was not just prioritizing, and I think Mayor Curtis, you had mentioned this in a previous council meeting, that prioritization is a tool, it's not necessarily the, the decision maker, right? And so we had, we had talked about potentially maybe bringing to you various kind of packaging of projects, whether it's like kind of a safety package or a transit package. The Transportation Commission, their, their feedback to us was that we, we start with our prioritization process. We can still do that if you want, to, you know, bring together some types of kind of project packages together. But for now, we're really looking at how the projects were prioritized. I do want to note that we were still in the process of updating our project scores when we talked with the Transportation Commission, so they didn't actually get a chance to see the scores themselves as kind of line items to the projects. And so I just wanted to put that caveat. And so that's something I'm really interested to talk with you all about tonight. The, I wanted to, we wanted to use a project example to talk through how projects do get prioritized through, so you have in your packet explanations of how projects have been prioritized. Some of them have been location-based, related to access to transit, access to our growth centers, for instance. And then other criteria such as countermeasures or projects that provide low stress, we went through with our engineering team and, and conducted that qualitative analysis through our transportation group. And so I, I do want to note that we, as, you know, the projects that get sorted out in terms of the prioritization, we, we are seeing some of our bigger projects and even some of our widening projects kind of trickling to the top of the list. And I think, I really appreciate the conversation about the complete streets ordinance. And, you know, it, it does mean a lot to revisit that, but I do want to kind of use this as an example to note that Kirkland really doesn't have widening projects where we're not doing full complete streets. So for instance, this 124th Avenue widening project, this is part of the, the station area plan, it includes a protected bicycle lane. All of our widening projects that we have in our project list, looking forward, include a protected bicycle lane and, and not just with the, the little plastic bollards, actually up on the sidewalk, up on the sidewalk and separated by a curb. And so we're looking at protected intersections. We are, this is a project that is along a transit corridor, it's along the future K-line corridor. We have been talking a lot with our maintenance team, and Fred will get into this in a minute, in terms of, you know, our stormwater treatment. So larger projects, we're going to have to invest into our stormwater mitigation. And so that is kind of, you know, I, we just kind of wanted to both use this as an opportunity to talk about, you know, how, the prioritization process without getting into every single measure at this meeting. I do want to mention the new technology. We heard loud and clear from our focus groups and from the Transportation Commission that in terms of technology and supporting technology, we want to support existing technology and we want to support future technology that we may not know about now. And so there are some projects that don't have any score for certain, for like the future technology measures. But as, we're not drawing the line now, tonight, in terms of where this falls, we really want to hear from all of you in terms of, you know, what gets funded, what doesn't get funded. And we'll get into this in a minute, but, you know, as projects get funded, as new money comes in, as we get more grant money, this is a living document. New, new projects that, that we hear about, we can, we can talk about the unfunded list and, and that's where we're, it's a forward-looking document in terms of how we're prioritizing things. And so we're, you know, some of the scores are forward-looking in terms of, you know, reaching our goals. We have been working with our finance team to look at our projected revenues. Again, as I mentioned, we have to fiscally constrain project list. We're looking at around $317 million over 20 years. There are some funding sources that are not included here. Big one, our grants, they are just very difficult to predict. Another one, you might think, notice our school zone safety cameras, for instance. The, we, that's really more of a, an incentive for people to not speed. So hopefully we have zero dollars through school zone safety cameras because we really don't want people speeding at our school zone. So there are some ways that we do have additional funds through this, and that's where that line starts moving up and down over time, but this is what we're looking at for our capital facilities plan. I'm going to hand this over to Fred to talk about the project estimation.
Yep, thanks, Kim. So as we took that long list of projects, we had to figure out how to go through and develop costs for many hundreds of projects. And to do that, we looked at, we developed planning level costs, so really high level, but looked at, I think my next slide will get to this, but looked at a bunch of things. A couple of things we did not include, right-of-way costs because they are, there are too many variables. So that, that's, some of these projects will require additional right-of-way. We did not include that because we just cannot do that at this point. There's another key regulatory change coming up regarding stormwater from both EPA and Washington Department of Ecology, which will cause, project costs to increase by up to 40%, we're expecting. And that is pretty significant. So we rolled those costs in, they're a line item within the project, so we can, we can track that. And then we also developed a range of costs, so low to high. There's just projecting out far enough, there's, everything is volatile right now, so we're just trying to provide, provide a range, to provide a bracket for what to expect. Next slide. So the process we used going through, I mentioned that, again, many hundreds of projects need an efficient way to get through them. We broke them into two categories, one where we could find either a linear cost for a project or a value per project, and, and those are based on BidTab's recent projects from Kirkland, as well as looking at Wash dot low bid process. The second level, medium level, again, looking at more detail for each of the project elements and, and putting that together. And really, everything was based on project descriptions that were pulled forward from all of the previous planning efforts.
Great, so thank you, Fred. So what we're going to be doing is working through this project list and identifying the priorities for the capital facilities plan. As I mentioned, you know, there are even projects that get, fall below the unfunded list, you know, it is a living document in that line, will move over time through our budget processes. And then there's an opportunity to update this every five years. We will be coming back to you in May and then a public hearing in June, and we will be working with our Transportation Commission every month until then. So I stopped talking, I'm really interested in hearing what you all have to say.
Thank you, Kimberly. Well, I think that we all could dive into the details of this, and we have a half an hour, and I don't know if that will be helpful for you. So what kind of feedback are you looking for from us to move you forward?
The, I'm looking over here at Doug.
I was looking at Doug, too.
Yeah, I think it's an accurate statement that if we want to get too deeply into the details, that's probably not the best type of feedback right now. What we are looking to get feedback on is some of the priorities that the council has. So we went into this, I think I mentioned that this is our first cut with the project list. So as a starting point, we want the political lens applied to the project list. We want to know, are there projects that should be elevated for any number of reasons outside of the scoring metrics? So we need that information so that we can re-sort the list and then bring you a better list next time we meet with you. So absolutely, please let us know if there are projects that aren't scoring high, that in the sort of objective first cut criteria, that need to be elevated. That, I think is a, is a good place to start. Also though, you know, Kim mentioned the idea of like talking about priorities. So are there other ways that we could go about developing this list in the sense of looking at broader priorities, like potentially climate change supportive type of projects? Maybe elevate a package of projects to the top? Again, we did talk to our commission about that and the kind of broader sentiment, there were a couple that liked that idea, but more, the majority of the commission wanted to just do top to bottom. And so that's what we're bringing forward right now. But if there is an appetite for that, we can definitely talk about that as well. I think, I don't know if Fred or Kim wants to add anything, or Victoria if you have, okay. Okay.
Okay, that's helpful. And I, I anticipate that we also may have some comments on the goals and policies, so you'll take those, too?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right, who wants to start? Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate the information here. I spent the afternoon drilling down into the spreadsheet, trying to find a way of saying, oh my gosh, we have a billion dollars worth of projects, 300 some million dollars in revenue. How do I provide anything helpful? And I have a couple of pieces of feedback. One is, I like the fact that you have broken up different projects into segments to be able to say, okay, here's things that we can do in pieces. But as I think about this, especially for something like protected bike lanes, it's going to be really important that we pick the projects that take these segments and actually have a full corridor, to be able to say, north-south through this part of the city, we can complete and show the world what a protected bike lane looks like. Or more importantly, east-west, because that's really, really where we have some challenges within the existing roadway. So we're looking for some ways to say, okay, whether, and you've got the information there to be able to say, what's, what's the best one to say? Is it 100th to the north-south? Is it 116th to east-west? What's, what's the best way that we could actually have a, the full complete street done? That'd be one way that I would suggest, looking at this. From a transit standpoint, I think what is important for transit reliability on the K-line is also a priority, looking at the list, that's actually not that many monetarily wise compared to some of the other projects. And then a couple of things to add, from a policy standpoint, we've said we want to do this across Kirkland Corridor Action Plan. I also think we're going to be wanting to take action on the action plan sometime in the 20-year CIP, definitely, maybe even in the six-year CIP. So is there a placeholder or some quick wins to be able to say, we're, we're putting some money into whatever you come up with the action plan, but knowing we're going to invest in that? And so that, that is up there. Another plan that fits into that, that is being looked at but didn't have projects is the Wanita Public Pathway. And I noted that there were a number of Greenway projects around Wanita High School. One potential, again, a placeholder, is that there is a power line corridor between 124th and Wanita High School that was part of the Wanita Public Pathway. And I know we've got study to do, given the feasibility study going on, but maybe that's another item for a placeholder, as something that we want to get started on that because it fits so well with some of the other things that you're looking about, how to get people to Wanita, Wanita High School, given some other projects. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Pascal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to say that I really liked that online map survey. That was, that was pretty neat to see, and it was really interesting to see all the feedback that others would provide and the thumbs up, thumbs down. It was a great way to really capture all the different projects and ideas out there and the needs, because there's a lot of them, and we want to do them all, but we have to prioritize. Couple things. You know, I, I like the fact that this is very project list focused. One of the reasons I like that is because we've had projects on the capital project list for decades, and then you look at some of them, you're like, what is that project? Where did that come from? Does that still make sense? And so we're basically kind of, I think, maybe starting from a clean slate and bringing and, and making sure that we have projects that make, that make a lot of sense for where we are today, not where we were 20 years ago. I think it would be good to understand and look at the project list a little bit differently. I, I like what you put in there, but could you normalize it by project cost? So there might be projects that provide benefits, a lot of benefits, but they're high cost. There might be other projects that provide, you know, half the benefits but at, you know, a fraction of the cost. How could we kind of tease those out and, and try to understand those? I saw a number of projects that talked about installing signals. I would like them to say intersection improvements or traffic control improvements and not call out the type of improvement. It could be a roundabout. So just a comment on that. I did look, I did sort the project list by studies. I was just curious what studies were shown. There's, there's only like four or five, it was very few. I know that folks poo-poo studies, but studies can be very informative because there are very challenging things out there, and if you don't study them, how do you ever come up with a solution? So there could be an incredible need, we don't know what it is, if we don't do a study, nothing ever happens. That's the problem. So I just challenge us to make sure that we're thinking about that broadly. The one study I did see was Lake Washington Boulevard Promenade. I thought that we've already studied that.
That would be for the south of where the original study was north of Lakeview Drive?
Yeah, I did notice that. It was from like Lakeview Drive to the South City Limits, and it was broken up in two pieces, and the study was, each study was over a million dollars, so I'd question that cost. That seemed disproportionate to the, to what it would take to do a study. That seemed disproportionate to the, to what it would take to do a study. I do like Deputy Mayor's comment about the Wanita Public Pathway. I agree that that 124th Avenue to Wanita High School is something I, I think is something to look at more closely. I would say that the project list, for me, was hard to consume and to digest, because I wanted to see a system map. Like, what's our vision? What do we want to, what's our vision for the transportation system? What's, what's, what are, what's the roadway functional classifications that we want to see or that we want to change? What's the greenway system? What's the bicycle facility system? What's the designs we want to see? What's, how are pedestrians getting around? Without that context, it's hard to understand the project list. So, that'd be something that would, I know will go into the plan, but it's, I think they kind of go hand in hand, and it's hard to see them separately. Couple, two more things. I want us to try new ideas. How do we do pilot projects? How do we try out things, see how they work? Low-cost, high-value improvements. I'd like us to have a policy on that, a program, perhaps. And then, finally, in terms of, the project list was really, it's kind of overwhelming. And--
Six-point font.
Yeah. But I guess the way, I was just wondering, how could we look at it differently? Like, how could, and I don't know how hard this would be, but what if you like promoted safety? What would be the safety package of projects that would then be moved forward in the next? If we wanted to just say, "Safety is the paramount thing," what do we do? Mobility for all modes is a paramount thing. What do we do? How does, how are those different? Sustainability is our paramount thing. Because, because what we like to do is, we want to do mobility, we want to do safety, we want to do sustainability, and that's good, and we try to balance that out. But, but what's really interesting in these exercises is, how do those different kind of lenses, do they all look the same? And that would be really telling, right? It'd be like, "Oh, okay, all the same projects come out ahead. Perfect. Let's move forward." But, but, but if you, if you look at it through those different lenses, different things will kind of tease out, and then you can kind of make some really informed decisions at a project, at a program level. I like to kind of think of this at a program level, not a project level. And that would be, I think, at this level, program level is how I would like to make sure we're always thinking about it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you. I'm going to echo what the mayor said about just how well-written this memo was, and I also particularly appreciated the, you know, the council remarks and being able to go back. That saved me so much time, so thank you for that. I really appreciate it. I also, like, agree with Councilmember Pascal, though. The list was a little overwhelming. I usually read, oftentimes read my packet on my phone, and that was a little much for me. I actually busted out the laptop to look at those lists, because it was, there was a lot of, you know, zooming in and scrolling, and, but it just shows what the need is, and also just the amazing work that staff and Transportation Commission have been working on. So, thank you to that. I agree that, I think this is a really helpful tool to help prioritize, and at the same time, I really want to also ensure we're looking at things holistically. I agree with some of the comments I've heard from my colleagues, that it's really important to have like full connected infrastructure for whether it be pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure, so that folks can actually get from somewhere to somewhere, right? That's really important. I'd rather have that and start with, you know, different priority areas within the city, rather than do, just to make every neighborhood happy, a project here, a project here, a project here, and then really not, or, you know, just because it scores a certain way, because it's near a certain intersection over here or over here, but then we really don't have a fully connected, right, from the user's perspective, because that's why we do this, right? So, folks can actually get around and get around safely in their chosen mode of transportation. And so, I do want us to look at that holistically. I think that goes to Deputy Mayor's comments about like networks and making sure we kind of build out and show a successful network for folks, and really, you know, looking at options for that and where that might be. I also think along with that, there might be some low-hanging fruit that I want us to look at, gaps, like sidewalk gaps, bike lane gaps, that might be, you know, easy wins in places throughout the community, whether that be safer routes to schools, or, you know, other, some of the projects that may not individually bubble up to the top of the list, and similar to Councilmember Pascal's comments about, you know, it may be, you know, half the value, but like only a tenth of the price or something, right? So, we're getting more bang for our buck with those projects. So, I do want us to think about this holistically again, try to fill in gaps where we can that help us create some of those larger networks, and also with some of the bigger projects, having fuller, completed networks. That's really important for us to have. I agree, just to put more support upon the, the power line, you know, section of the Wanita Public Pathway there on 124th to Wanita High School, I think that's a really important thing for us to look at. You know, it was also mentioned, looking at piloting different ideas. I fully support that as well. We've recently talked about, you know, pavement art, pavement markings, and the value in that, and multiple values in that. So, those types of things, I'd like to see us think outside the box. Also, want to keep our, our options flexible for having either a roundabout or other types of improvements. I also do have a few minor comments on the guiding principles as well, but just to shift gears to that. Under T5 Technology and Emerging Practices, it currently states the transportation system should be flexible and equipped to adapt to new technologies and innovative solutions that expand mobility choices for people living and working in Kirkland. People do a lot more than just live and work in Kirkland, right? And even the live-work-play is kind of something that I don't really love, because people go to school here, people do, people go to the doctors here, do a lot of things other than that. So, maybe we could just say for people in Kirkland, right? Like, that's, you know, pretty inclusive of whatever folks are doing when they exist in our city. Also, on T7 Equity, I, you know, I'm really appreciative, and I know that as a city, we're fully on board with moving forward with equity work, and I'm really thankful for that. I appreciate some of the things that are called out here, age, ability, and background. I would add to that, I know that we do have kind of a catch-all, you know, with the DEIB work, but I would add socioeconomic status here, too. I think that's really crucial. Some of the comments we heard earlier about, you know, discretionary versus dependent transit ridership is really important, and not just a transit, but for the active transportation infrastructure to get to and from transit as well is really crucial. And so, you know, I would argue that socioeconomic status is actually really key and will be as we think of other components of our comprehensive plan updates as well, specifically the affordable housing, the housing element of our comp plan. It's a little bit of the chicken and the egg, but as we have more lower-income housing within our city, we're likely to have more transit-dependent riders, and so, it's really important that we're focusing on that future and thinking that in, as far as a lens of the work we're doing. I also thought the online map survey was kind of fun, cool to look at. I would also, we, we've received a lot of feedback, and a lot of feedback even today, a letter today, and some other emails today related to this. I've read them, haven't fully had time to process and have conversations with staff about response to that. So, I would love to have a formal staff response to some of those and to, to get insight from staff on those issues that were raised and those ideas that were raised, and then have an opportunity for us to then discuss that as well at a future council meeting. I know that we do have this on our agenda, again, I think you said in May. So, I just want to be able to first have staff respond to that, make sure we're well-educated on what we're already doing in that regards, and maybe areas that we might want to do a little bit more in those areas as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember, Tim Chisen.
I just wanted to echo my colleague's request for a basket of categories, so that it's more digestible. I'd also like to get the Transportation Commission's feedback on which baskets they prioritize and what our values are as a city, and then perhaps choose from that, those baskets. I wasn't going to say that I was overwhelmed by the list, because I'm new on the city council, so I was just going to kind of let it slide and not say anything. But, but that would make it more manageable, and getting the Transportation Commission's feedback, I think, would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, not going to repeat anything that's already been said. I did, there are a couple of things that I wanted to suss out a little bit. The first one is, on Friday, the Transportation Ad-Hoc, whatever we call that thing, Transportation Ad-Hoc Work Group, or is it the Ad-Hoc Transportation Work Group?
Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee.
Committee, all right. We heard a presentation from our stormwater team, from Kelly Jones, about the upcoming adoption of the MPDS permit for the 6PPD, which is the tire dust that's toxic to salmon. And one of the things we heard from that was that there's going to be, basically be a window in which transportation projects that would implicate that new, newly adopted MPDS permit could be designed, and if targeted to be complete by a certain date, I think the date was 2032, they would not necessarily be subject to that. And the only reason, the reason to bring this up is not to avoid regulatory compliance. The reason to bring this up is, it's a huge, I think, Fred, is it Fred? Yeah. I think you brought this up, or referenced it, is it's a huge increase in the cost of a lot of the projects. Do we, I just kind of want to understand how that works in, how are, I, we left that conversation with, "Hey, we're going to be thinking about this, we're going to be planning for this." How does that fit into the list of projects? And then, I have one more question after that.
Yeah, absolutely. There's going to be impact. I know that Kelly's team, Kelly Jones, our Stormwater Manager in Public Works, I believe, is coming to the council on the second, if I recall correctly, to give a more thorough presentation on this. So, keep an eye out for that. But what we're assuming right now is the cost increases that Fred identified, assuming no other types of solutions have come about, like regional stormwater facilities. We haven't incorporated any of that into the conversation. It is something that could be looked at. But yes, there is a time component. As far as that relates to the project list, I think it's maybe not as directly represented in this, because we are looking at the full 20-year list. As we get to six-year planning and through our transportation improvement plan, I think that's, might be where those conversations are probably a little bit more crucial. I think it's, for now, it's important to think about the potential cost increases that are out there and making sure that we at least track them. The way that this is set up is, we have the 20-year list, we have the six-year transportation improvement plan, and then the two-year capital budget. And I think as projects go from the 20-year list and make their way closer to implementation, those conversations are going to be much more critical. Right now, we're trying to be, identify those conceptual impacts, just so that we don't under-plan effectively. Hopefully, that helps.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The other question I had was, it is related to the Sixth Street Corridor Study, and it's related to the Houghton Village Project. Just one of, that's a unique situation where the city acquired that property specifically to, you know, without getting into details, but basically for a community benefit, citywide community benefit. But one of the things that we sort of have heard in connection with that is the, some of the teachings from the Sixth Street Corridor Study, changes to transportation infrastructure and traffic management strategies that are sort of identified in that study, that make future development in the Houghton Everest Neighborhood Center more, well, create the concurrency that we look for when we talk about development and our transportation infrastructure. So, that's unique in the sense, I guess, in that we, the city has, we kind of know what the timeframe is for that development. We have some, not complete control over the timing of that. And since we sort of have a better sense of timing there than just about anywhere else in the city, where, you know, we don't know if a property is going to get sold to a developer, and suddenly, a new building permit's going to get submitted, and, and there's going to be a new plan for that property. This one, we have a little bit better sense of the timing. I'm just wondering how the Sixth Street Corridor Plan projects, especially that, sorry, Councilmember Pascal, what'd you call them? Infrastructure, or intersection improvements? How the, particularly the intersection improvements are factored into the priority, the project list?
I can speak to that a little bit. Not necessarily to new development, because we don't know what's happening, what will happen there, but there has been a lot of work looking at that particular quarter in terms of the school access, the turn lane access, driveway access, finishing out the bike lane that goes through there. It's actually kind of one of the, one of the projects that we've had quite a lot of, like, little, more of a detailed look into, you know, some of the, like, specific, because it's a 20-year project list, and so, not all of the projects have kind of that level of detail. This is one that we do have looked at, because on the opposite side of the street, there's Metropolitan Market, and kind of driveway access, there's Starbucks there, and there're, so, but I appreciate the thought of kind of thinking about the timeline. I hope that answers your question, but yeah, we've been looking at that.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to, yep, no, I'm just, I'm just daylighting it, so that makes sure we're thinking about that.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Sweet?
It's got to have something to do with stormwater, too. And I just wanted to address the stormwater issue. This, by the way, has been an incredibly rich series of comments. I'm, I'm really impressed at the level of expertise of this council. But the stormwater issue brings up the politics again, and I think we need to be at least initiating a conversation, and Kelly, you'll have an opportunity to talk about this, at regional water quality. This is an issue that is far bigger than, than any city. It's, and the effects that it's going to have on us for rates across the systems is massive. So, solid waste, wastewater, water, it's everywhere. So, I just, and I think that stormwater doesn't really have a position in any of this discussion, which is why it kind of just gets left out there, and then Kelly has to come and tell us what's going on. It has never been looped into the overall water discussion in a way that's particularly effective. So, that would be my only comment.
Thank you. I hope that this feedback that you've received has been helpful, and I, again, want to thank the Transportation Commission and our passionate stakeholders. Some are in the room, some are visiting us via email. I don't want to undervalue the work that you've done here. It's hugely helpful, but I agree with the council comments that you've received, that now we need to go back to the 20,000-foot level and talk about what are our strategies and our strategic plan, and what, what do we want Kirkland to look like in 20 years from now? So, I appreciate the feedback that you've, you've received. I recognize that, you know, we're asking for east-west and north-south corridors, but we also want quick winds, and then we also want the Wanita Public Pathway, and we want a standard for protected bike lanes, and it's a lot, but I'm confident that you can pull it all together. So, thank you. Anybody else?
Any commissioners? Chair McGee, anything to add?
Well, just in case the list of 450 wasn't, you know, too much information, I was wondering if, since there's a number of projects on that list that have pretty much the same exact description, but different costs, if it would be possible to get the information on what is kind of the, the proposed or imagined actual changes on each project, so that we can dive further in-depth into what, what each of those actually entail?
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just kind of add on that I appreciated many of the comments. We've actually talked with some of them already on, in our last commission meeting, kind of, anything from the maps, kind of the visioning, the full network, to really just kind of looking at how we really identify some of the benefits that are coming through with the scoring. And I know, we'll talk more next week at our commission meeting, kind of as a next step, so I think this gives us a great kind of launching point to go from.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Oh, no, I, I think we had a great debate, you know, on the commission about prioritizing or bucketing, basketing. I think the comment that Councilman Pascal made about, to be able to see differential, if there's a bucket, I think that, that didn't come across for us, and so, I think that's really great feedback for us to take back, because we were kind of like, "Climate change? Are we taking something?" But using it as a tool to differentiate if there are commonalities, I think that's a great comment back for us.
Good, wonderful. Doug, do you have what you need? Oh, oh. Commissioner, in the vault.
I liked hearing some of the comments from council members about the vision, and, you know, something that I really care a lot about is that we aren't comparing ourselves to the city that we were 30, 40 years ago, that we're comparing ourselves to the city that we want to be in 20 years, and that's how we're measuring progress, not we're incrementally better than the past, but we're working toward the future.
Yeah.
And that's, I was hearing elements of that, so I like that.
I agree.
Thank you.
You have what you need?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. It was wonderful to be able to sit down with you. We are adjourned until we return at 7:30 for our regular meeting. Thank you. We're live now. Thank you. We are back in session following a joint special, a special joint meeting with the Transportation Commission and a study session on the transportation strategic plan update. I want to note that we have a number of students with us this evening who are here to present on Item 9A, naming the Wanita High School Access Road Raven Way. I would entertain a motion to amend tonight's agenda to consider Item 9A earlier after our honors and proclamations rather than during our business meeting. Are you moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Falcone, second by Councilmember Tim Chisholm. Any, any comments? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries seven zero. All right. We are now going to move to honors and proclamations. Our next item is the National Safe Place Week proclamation, City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we'll be recognizing March 17th through 23rd as National Safe Place Week in the City of Kirkland. There's a lot of background in your memo, and the reasons for this recognition will be listed in the resolution itself. We have a special guest to receive the resolution, and that is Laura Blackett, who is the Director of Special Projects and Safe Place Supervisor with Friends of Youth.
Thank you.
Will be joining you down here.
Deputy Jay Arnold will be reading the proclamation.
Thank you. Oops. My [inaudible]. A proclamation recognizing March 17th through 23rd as National Safe Place Week in the City of Kirkland. Whereas National Safe Place is a nationwide youth outreach and prevention program implemented in communities across the United States to create a network of locations equipped to serve youth in need that are age 12 through 17, providing immediate help, crisis intervention, safety and emergency shelter, and connections to ongoing supportive services. And whereas Safe Place has ensured cohesion and ease of use by establishing a universal diamond-shaped black and yellow sign, the vivid, easily distinguishable emblem serving as a beacon to youth in need, affording them the instant knowledge that any facility that displays the Safe Place sign is a place where they can receive help and be connected to community resources or emergency shelter. And whereas, in 2012, Friends of Youth, a nonprofit organization that strives to care for at-risk teens, homeless youth, and young people in need of assistance, sought a collaborative approach to fill a critical need and joined forces with Seattle-based nonprofit Youth Care to expand the King County Safe Place Program and provide immediate help and safety to an increased number of King County youth in crisis. And whereas, King County is home to over 2,100 Safe Place locations, each of which has participated in training to earn its designation as an official Safe Place location. And whereas Kirkland has several Safe Place locations, including Friends of Youth, Holy Family Parish Center, Lake Washington Christian Church, Lake Washington United Methodist Church, North Kirkland Community Center, Peter Kirk Community Center, the Lake Washington Institute of Technology, Evergreen Health Emergency Department, Kirkland Library, Kingsgate Library, and every King County Metro Bus. And whereas, Safe Place has embraced technology, implementing a safe call system in which a youth in need can call 1-800-422-TEEN, that's 8336, or simply text SAFE at a current location to receive instant data on the nearest Safe Place site. And whereas recognitions, like National Safe Place Week raise important awareness of this vital program, building capacity within the existing framework by encouraging more businesses and nonprofits to become Safe Place locations, allowing the program to serve more youth in crisis, now therefore, Mayor Kelly Curtis, on behalf of the City Council, does hereby proclaim the week of March 17th through the 23rd as National Safe Place Week. And with his proclamation, extends our sincere gratitude to Friends of Youth and the Safe Place Program for their important work to ensure the safety of our youth.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. As he so beautifully stated, the success of our programs really depends on community participation and community support. We have two coordinators for all of King County, and we're able to serve and provide resources, often the first touch for young people in crisis, to stop or, it's almost like triage, right? And the earlier we get to the young people, the sooner we can rectify the situation. I don't, I just found out I was going to be speaking today, so. Early prevention really does help alleviate troubles down the road. And we all know that there is a huge explosion of people experiencing homelessness in King County, and that doesn't happen overnight. It really does start with trauma that young people and youth are in. So the sooner we can get in and provide resources and support, the sooner we can set them on the path of living the life that they deserve and that they can and have the potential to do. So really, thank you so much for providing the support that makes this program so successful.
We are going to move on to Business 9A, the Raven Way Street name dedication, City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So it's a little fitting, I am the substitute teacher on this item tonight for Andreana Campbell. So I'm going to grade some of her remarks. So first, we're very excited tonight to be joined by the Wanita High School Associated Student Body Advisor, Travis Salmy, and members of the ASB. ASB Vice President Elizabeth Orswell, who is here, brought the name of renaming the entrance to Wanita High School as Raven Way to former Councilmember Toby Nixon in last August. And we've been working since that time. We're very excited to have arrived at this point. There's a few other people I want to thank. This effort would not have been possible without the commitment of Councilmembers Amy Falcone and John Pascal, and their work on the 2023 Lake Washington School District Coordinating Committee. And Lake Washington School District Superintendent John Holman and his team, who also partnered with us on this. Principal Kelly Clapp of Wanita High School, Wanita High School ASB, especially the City of Kirkland Sign Shop, Brian Dulcig, Jenna Malamo, and Todd Schaefer, who both made some examples for us today and also are making the final signs to go up. But finally, I would also like to express my profound thanks to Andreana Campbell, our Special Projects Coordinator in the City Manager's Office. She has partnered with everyone to make this project possible and a reality. And she could not be here tonight, as she and her husband are welcoming their second child any day now. So, but the very great news is that they live in the Wanita High School learning community, and so we have a new Raven on the way, which is going to go soon. So thank you, Andreana, who might be watching us from afar. So with that, Ordinance 4872 is before your consideration, and I have one slide, and I'll be looking for council action. So Ordinance 4872 assigns the name Raven Way to what is now currently the unnamed Access Road 1, which is the private street, a long driveway, if you will, that provides access to Wanita High School. And by acting on the ordinance, you'll be renaming that to Raven Way. So happy to answer any questions.
I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt Ordinance 04872 in ordinance of the City of Kirkland relating to assigning the name Raven Way to the unnamed Access Road 1, a private street providing access to Wanita High School.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Falcone, second by Councilmember Pascal. Any discussion? Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, so as a dad of two current Wanita High School students, very supportive of this change, and just really appreciative of the students that brought this to our attention. Myself and Councilmember Falcone represent the council on the Lake Washington School District Coordinating Committee, so we meet quarterly with leadership of the school district. And this was something that we brought to their attention a number of months ago, and really are glad to see it now before us. I would just say that I remember when students from my alma mater made a similar request, like 20 some years ago, and it has always stuck out in my mind. It was a memorable experience because it showed how the youth and the young generation could get involved in their, in their city government and make some change. And it might seem insignificant to some of changing a road name, but it's a big deal. And it demonstrates how government works. It shows that good ideas can become reality, and all you need to do is build support and raise awareness of the issue. And so just bravo to all the students here tonight and those that can't be here, but this is an easy request to approve.
Anyone else? Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I echo everything that Councilmember Pascal said, and also just want to say kudos and thank you to the students of Wanita High School for bringing this forward and for your advocacy on this. As you can tell, things take time in government, and we really appreciate your patience with that. Hopefully that was a, kind of a lesson in what it takes to be persistent in advocating for something. But congratulations and kudos to the students. We really appreciate you and your advocacy. You know, symbols matter and words matter, and I am really proud of not only this renaming, but the work that was really student-led to, to have a new mascot at Wanita High School. As a mom of three future Ravens, I'm really happy that this work has already been done and that my students get to be Ravens, that they'll see this sign when they enter their high school. And, and I'm also really thankful, I do want to thank, you know, Council, previous Councilwoman Nixon for his work on this. As Councilmember Pascal said, this is a really great example of how speaking up can make a difference in your community, and I hope you take that lesson with you throughout your life, that your voice matters and that it's really important to speak up. And this really, you know, I think this is important because this creates, as was said in the letter, helps create a recognition of place, helps to encourage stronger pride in the Wanita community, as well as stronger connections within the community and neighbors and students at Wanita High School. So thank you to the school district for being supportive, to the students, to everybody involved. I'm really excited that we have this new, this is just a mock-up, but new, new sign. You have a lot to be proud of, so thank you and congratulations.
Awesome. Okay, the question is on the motion to approve Ordinance 04, we need the glasses, 4872 relating to assigning the name Raven Way to the unnamed Access Road 1, a private street providing access to Wanita High School. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tim Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Falcone?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Pascal?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Arnold?
Yes.
Mayor Curtis?
Yes. All right. We're going to come down and take a picture with the students, and then the students can make some comments if they'd like. Yeah, we need to squish in a little bit here. All right. All right. Does anybody want to make a few comments?
Hi. My name is Elizabeth. I am the Vice President of the Wanita ASB right now, sort of spearheaded this project, trying to get, make it happen. We are so excited that this is actually being passed, as Councilwoman Falcone and Councilwoman Pascal already said. This is a really big deal to the Wanita school community, especially as Councilmember Falcone said, we recently underwent a mascot change at our school in order to create a more diverse and inclusive community for all of our students. So while the symbol is amazing in promoting spirit for our school and pride in what our community is, it's also establishing and embellishing that our community is really devoted to creating a diverse experience for all of our students, and that we are proud of that, and that we really are excited to show off what our new mascot is and what it means to our school. This is going to be the first thing that students, parents, teachers, visitors see when walking into Wanita or driving into Wanita. So we are very, very excited that we get to show off our pride in our school, what it means to be a Raven, and yeah, that's it.
And you get to take these home with you. Again, congratulations. One of our favorite things to do is take pictures with young people. All right. This is the time in our meeting when we normally hear from the public on matters that are not quasi-judicial, are scheduled for a public hearing, of which there is none scheduled for this evening. So please limit your remarks to three minutes, and council will receive up to three comments each on both sides of the issue. If you are present either in person or virtually and would like to address the council during the items for audience, please sign up using the online public comment instruction link or in-person using the QR code. For those participating by phone, please dial star nine to be recognized to speak. Community members will be called in the order that they have signed up. Items for the audience is an important part of our business meeting, and we ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect. We ask that you please not clap or applaud after a speaker or express your disagreement with a speaker. We want everyone in Kirkland to feel welcome, expressing their viewpoints regardless of content. Because they can be disruptive signs and placards, besides that sign, are not allowed in council chambers during our meetings, regardless of content. City Clerk?
We have six people signed up to speak. The first three are John Barber, Susan Papalardo, and Jane Aine Binder.
Mr. Barber.
That's an incredibly tough act to follow. But in the spirit of speaking up, Mayor Curtis, Deputy Mayor Arnold, council members, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I've lived in the Norkirk neighborhood for 15 years. When my wife and I moved here from Seattle, we did not have any children. Now that we are the proud parents of two beautiful girls ages 11 and 7, we are grateful for the commitment that the City of Kirkland has made to make this a wonderful place to raise a family. So thank you. This takes me to tonight, tonight's petition relating to the request for sidewalks on 19th Avenue in Norkirk between Market Street and Fourth Street. And I believe the city clerk has forwarded to you a photo of the street. For years, we've dodged cars and while walking or on bikes, as this is our primary path to Crestwoods Park. In some areas of 19th Avenue, this street is very narrow, having little to no shoulder and a ditch on one side. People have no place to walk except in the road. We would like our children to have a safe walking route to school. I've also seen older neighbors having difficulty navigating the unimproved shoulder to avoid getting hit. I believe this project was selected as one of the target projects for the Safer Routes to School Action Plan implemented in 2020. Sidewalks on 19th Avenue was determined to be a medium priority. I kindly asked this council to reassess this determination in light of the current usage of 19th Avenue and expected increased traffic volumes in the very near future. So since 2020, when that implementation took place, a lot has changed. We've returned to in-person learning. We've returned, we have return-to-work mandates. We have increased toll rates on 520 and 405, which is increasing traffic throughout Kirkland principal arterials. This has resulted in an increase in cut-through traffic through the roads within Norkirk, including 19th Avenue. Also, enrollment at nearby Kirkland Middle School has increased nearly 10% since that time. So what is unique about this specific stretch of 19th Avenue in Norkirk? In a neighborhood that must deal with cut-through traffic, it's the, one of the only segments of road within Norkirk with no sidewalks. While not deemed an arterial or a connector, 19th serves as such as it's the northernmost east-west street in Norkirk with direct access to Crestwoods Park and Kirkland Middle School. It also offers the most direct access from north Norkirk to Market Street for those drivers wanting to head north. to Market Street for those drivers wanting to head north. Over one hundred and forty households north of Nineteenth rely solely on Nineteenth as its direct access to Market Street to drive north. Subdivisions of existing lots is increasing the number of households which rely on Nineteenth. Also, as you may be aware, with the recent Lake Washington School District School Boundary Map redraw, Kirkland Middle will have an additional elementary school feeding its enrollment, Mark Twain in Rose Hill. Kirkland Middle enrollment is expected to increase by fifteen percent.
Ms. Barber, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Ms. Papalardo.
Good evening. I'll key off the word persistence tonight. Good evening, Mayor Curtis, Deputy Mayor Arnold, and council members. My name is Susan Papalardo. As a thirty-one-and-a-half-year resident, a PFAC member, Prop One Yes Campaign leader, and the co-founder and president of the nonprofit Splash Forward, I want to share my thoughts prior to your discussion tonight on the next steps following the pool ballot measure survey. As you know, the appetite for public funding for a new public community pool is not strong, and park staff will be recommending suspension of a 2024 community pool ballot measure. After looking at the detailed survey responses, there is momentum from which to build toward meeting the well-identified aquatic needs for Kirkland residents. It is time to invest in our social infrastructure, even if we must use our existing facilities like Peter Kirk Pool and the Juanita High School Pool as our initial framework. What can we do today that will expand access to essential swim lessons and aquatic opportunities that will make healthier, safer, and us stronger? We can take the seeds of our Splash Forward work with the city, the Lake Washington School District, Wave Aquatics, and our community to create a path forward that can ultimately lead to a new community pool that will truly expand capacity and address top features surveys respondents expressed. Swim lessons, lap swim, accessible and exclusive facility design, and a place for kids and families to recreate together. Let's not lose this opportunity to make Kirkland better than it is today. Let's continue to seek private funding and partnerships that lead us to a future vision for a new community pool. Kirkland tested the case for a hundred percent public funding, and the majority of residents said they cannot shoulder the cost for investments in social infrastructure. We need private funding and private partnerships to reduce the public burden and create a story voters can support. Splash Forward's mission is to support new public aquatic facilities and programs in our region that expand access to aquatics by reducing barriers. We are an advocacy and aquatics thought leader and a private funding partner. I urge the survey respondents and community members that want a community pool to support Splash Forward. I'm again making an open call to the forty-one percent yes voters from November 2023 and the fifty-five percent survey respondents who support a new pool to join us, get involved, fund, and support our nonprofit. We will continue to show up for our community and support the city. Private funding and partnerships are essential. Yes, we can collectively fund and every third grader learns to swim initiative that serves, equitably serves all third graders. We can pass the Lake Washington School District's November levy that will renovate Juanita High School Pool. We can create an equity story for all across, for affordable access, and we can identify local private capital funding and programming partners. Collectively, we can raise the private funding and reduce the public burden. Together, we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Aine Binder?
Good evening, Mayor Curtis, Deputy Mayor Arnold, and city council members. Thank you for hearing me tonight regarding the petition to install a sidewalk along Nineteenth Avenue between Market Street and to east of Third Street. As the one hundred and thirty-plus and growing number of signatures on the petition show, the neighbors of this area all feel very strongly that a lack of a sidewalk along this street has become increasingly more dangerous over the years. I urge council members to reconsider the plans such as the safer routes to school and the active transportation plan that rate this area for sidewalk connectivity as a mid or low priority. With the increased number of single households, household properties on Nineteenth Avenue area being replaced with multiple-unit properties, car and pedestrian traffic are on the rise. With the city's plan for more growth and schools making accommodations for more students, there must be the infrastructure in place to support it. And currently, Nineteenth Avenue is lacking that infrastructure without a proper sidewalk. I urge council members to read the petition or read the comments in the petition that voice the concerns of the citizens of this area. This street is a direct passage to Kirkland Middle School, Peter Kirk Elementary, Crestwoods Park, and the Cross Kirkland Corridor, and people are afraid to walk the street or have their children walk the street without a sidewalk. I would argue that the plans in place, such as the safer routes to school and the active transportation plans, are not in line with what the community wants and needs in this case. Please listen to the people who live in the area and reconsider making the installation of a sidewalk along Nineteenth Avenue a priority for our city before there is an injury or a fatality. Thank you so much for your time, for your service, and your consideration.
Thank you.
The next four speakers are Kevin Kirkpatrick, followed by Corky Truwan, Alex Zimmerman, and Paul Quinn.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, city councils and members. My name is Kevin Kirkpatrick. I am a resident in Nineteenth Avenue, also pledging my general support here of the petition here. I moved to this area here with my wife and our two-and-a-half-year-old son. Our reason we wanted to move here was really being close to wonderful schools, close to the wonderful city of Kirkland, and certainly the reputation of the entire city. The major concern I have is echoing the same, is what we've heard earlier today, which is this small stretch along Nineteenth Avenue connecting Market Street to the James Kirk Middle School. One interesting thing that we've done, I only knew about the petition a few days ago, when my neighbor recently posted that we found this and we posted this on a little post right around this area on the street. We've collected a hundred signatures in less than three days. This has been a huge upturn from, I think, what originally might seem your paperwork here, talking about the petition support. We expect the support is much larger than this across the city and across the general neighborhood. The one thing I've definitely seen myself, I have walked up this patch of street here. I've walked with my son. I've seen my neighbors go through and have their parents take their grandchildren and walk this way towards Crestwood Park, often connecting to the investment in the Cross Kirkland Corridor, and it is a very dangerous path. It's certainly something that I don't like having to make the choice between dodging cars or finding a way in some trails behind my house or something like that where you're needing to kind of strap on some mud boots and such. So, I really just urge your attention. One other point that we did not make in some earlier time here, tonight here, is we recognize there's a large increase in the enrollment size of Kirkland Middle School, fifteen percent expected, I think, this year and continuing in the next couple of years. We expect that this patch of road here is going to continue to grow in traffic, and we kind of urge that the city take action here and help us build a safe path up this road here to walk our children to school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Truwan.
Good evening, Mayor Curtis, Deputy Mayor Arnold, council members, city administrative employees. Thank you very much for being here. I'm Corky Truwan. Yes, I am a hockey fan. I played hockey when I was a youngster and had to go to Bellevue to play on my ice from Redmond. The opportunity for the city of Kirkland to have a world-class hockey facility sponsored by the Kraken and their leadership of Todd Liewicky, Lance Lopes, and Bill Chapin is unquestionably one of the greatest assets that the city of Kirkland could entertain at this time. We are a wonderful city. Growing the city to be even more spectacular is what the Seattle Kraken are giving the city, the opportunity to have a facility that only, not only is an ice skating and hockey facility, but gives the city of Kirkland an event space that we so dearly need. The event space, in my opinion, could be used probably twenty-four hours a day if we authorize that. We are so lacking in event space, and the Kraken giving us that opportunity to have the third floor of their design right now, and I urge you to really vet that design so that it benefits the city of Kirkland even more. When I worked for the Seahawks at Carrollon Point, everyone loved the fact that the Seahawks were in Kirkland. And when I worked for the Seahawks up at Northwest College, everyone loved the fact the Seattle Seahawks were at Northwest College. Yes, the Seahawks are down in Renton at V Mac. Now, it's an opportunity to bring another professional sport entity into the city of Kirkland and give us extra space for our children to recreate in, on ice time, where right now on the east side, I counted only two sheets of ice. We do need more ice. When the Seattle Thunderbirds moved to Kent, it did open up the North Kirkland Ice Arena. However, with the growing attendance, growing population in the city of Kirkland, I do think we need more ice time, more sheets, more space. And I think this opportunity is one that will further designate the city of Kirkland as a wonderful place to live, a wonderful place to move to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Yeah. Yeah. Time open? Yeah. Zihail, my Dori Dem Nazi fascist hunter in government antisemite. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to explain to you something what is very unique, which I can hope happen only here in this location, exactly in Bellevue. So, yesterday Bellevue have a council meeting. They don't give me chance. Speak, nothing unusual has happened for many years. They bring more than three dozen Iranians to celebrate Iranian New Year. They give them chance. Speak. After this, this group approximately thirty, forty people staying together with council, and everybody happy. Yeah, I like when it's people happy, not matter who you are. This situation what is make me absolutely idiotic looking. Yeah. And I live in Bellevue most for forty years and speak probably hundred times, maybe more. Are they doing this because they hate America? Hate American, you know what it's mean? They show everybody, so they support Iranian, make Iranian Muslim. Deputy Mayor, it brings this to everybody. Guys, I'm totally confused. How is this possible? You know what it's mean? And everybody quiet. I never hear one form of protest. I only one man who come into guys, we have war with Iran. It's us enemy. Why is they doing this? Why is they show everybody? So, they have a big, big, big. Sorry for my civilized language. You know what it's mean? You know what I mean? Problem not only this, problem why everybody quiet? No one newspaper, no one media talking about this and talk, why you doing this? Why you support Iranian? Yeah. Thirty, forty people is not one or three. Is this exactly what has happened? So, they Iranian kill us soldier, you know what it's mean? Today or tomorrow, it will be real war. I guarantee you this by hundred percentage. Yes, exactly, because America cannot handle this for a long time. This will be real war, because when we not destroy Iran, nothing will be in Middle East good for America. I guarantee you this, like professional politician. So, my question right now to everybody who listen to me, guys, wake up, stand up. So, Democratic Party right now acting like a terrorist, like a bandito, like a criminal. When you open internet, you know what it's mean? And go to Washington DC, hundred people talking about this. So, wake up totalitarian regime controlling by Democrat mafia, bandito, hunter. So, right now I speak to everybody, stand up, my brother and sister. We need stopping this Nazi pig who thinking they not care about America. They not care about people.
Mr. Zimmerman, hang on a moment, please. Mr. Zimmerman, the council has allowed you to make your remarks tonight out of respect to you, and we have tried to work with you, and we have told you repeatedly that your comments and actions are hurtful and divisive and become actually disruptive to our meeting. If you persist in this manner in future meetings, I will call a recess, and we will ask you to leave. Before continuing, I also want to offer a comment on behalf of the council. We heard statements tonight that are hurtful and offensive to our community. The city council does not condone those comments, and they are actually becoming disruptive to our meeting. We are committed to making Kirkland a safe, inclusive, and welcoming community for everyone. At the same time, items from the audience provides an opportunity for community members to express their views to council regardless of content. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. City Clerk, who do we have next?
Paul Quinn.
And Mr. Quinn, my apologies.
So, good evening, mayor and council members. Name's Paul Quinn. I live in Sammamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual that cares about recycling, composting, and reducing what we send to the landfill. I want to thank Councilmember Sweet for willingness to talk to me on these matters in the future. Let's start with a reminder that King County survey of trash sent to the landfill show that two-thirds of what we send to the landfill can be either recycled or composted. So, two-thirds of our trash is actually not trash. In the first handout I provided to the council, it's different than the last time. I've updated some things. The chart on the top right shows Kirkland's diversion rate per year is getting worse since 2021. In the next chart down, you can see it's really, in each category, there's no real progress in the last three years in improving diversion out of the landfill. The tables on the left in the handout reflect now through February's numbers of this year compared to February's last year, and we see a significantly worse diversion rate so far this year in just the first two months. And the city's sustainability master plan is great. I mean, there's nothing to add to that. So, this plan shows the city cares about recycling and composting. We have good plans to do better, and yet we've done worse. Why? One reason, I think, is we need actions that are citywide. We need actions that cover all single-family residents, all businesses, all multifamily locations. Next, I'm going to walk through some of the recommendations noted in the second of your three handouts. I suggest the city should initiate a program to provide a kit to each household and business, which would contain a free indoor recycling container and a free countertop kitchen scrap container. This kit sends a strong message. The city council feels strongly about recycling and composting as it's providing a free kit to all residents. This is a citywide effort with impact. The city's made efforts to educate folks to do more recycling and composting. As our declining rates of diversion clearly show, education is good, but insufficient to drive change. Therefore, I suggest the city pass an ordinance to require all businesses serving the public to make available a recycle container. All businesses serving food to the public make available a food scraps container. Pass the city ordinance to require all one thousand one hundred and seventeen remaining multifamily locations make available a food scrap compost container. Let's make recycling and composting simpler. When a resident's working with a Kirkland business, I require each business to work with a disposal company to assure all public-facing disposal containers match the colors used by residents. These matters have urgency, as each month Kirkland sends to the landfill another two thousand tons. People in the city of Kirkland want to live sustainably. They need the tools and the leadership of this council to help them increase their rate of recycling and composting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is petition on the Nineteenth Avenue sidewalk under council Rule 3.08, council has several options for accepting this petition, and I do want you to know, everyone in the audience, that we have looked closely at the petition and at the names and at the pictures and are considering this seriously. City staff has recommended that we proceed with option two to accept the petition and refer it to staff for follow-up for pricing and see how it fits in our prioritization. Do I have a motion? Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Arnold?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the staff recommendation for petition G 24241 and recommend that staff accept the petition and refer it to staff.
Second? It has been moved by Deputy Mayor Arnold, second by Councilmember Falcone. Is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you may or may not know, I live in this neighborhood about a block from 19th and walk on the road daily during dog walk and have to go from one side of the street to the other depending on where traffic is and the available shoulder. And this is a definite problem, and I appreciate the work of the neighborhood to escalate this to us. As part of the Safe Routes to Schools work that you've referred to, we had identified the first set of priority projects, and those are things that we have funded in the budget to do. And now it's time to take a second look at the things that we didn't fund, and 19th should be one of those that we look at and see what our options are. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you to those who spoke up and advocated. As I, you know, echo my words that I said earlier to the students at Wanita High School, it really is important that we hear from community members and you speak up and advocate for yourselves and your community. So thank you for that. I just want to add that it would be really helpful that some of the options that staff brings back include flexibility and what that may look like, right? I know, for example, there are some places where we have, you know, a traditional curved sidewalk and some places where we have a paved shoulder with a raised curb, and there may be other potential improvements. So I just want us to have flexibility and options to look at for what we may be able to do in the nearer term here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Tumchis?
Thank you. I was very impressed by the organization of this petition. I was also struck by Kristi Bergen's comments about how this is the main road to Kirkland Middle School and Crestwood Park. And I would be in favor of referring it to staff, but not just referring it to staff, but following up and making sure that we have a response within a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you. Questions on the motion to refer the petition to staff for follow-up? Motion by Deputy Mayor Arnold, second by Councilmember Falcone. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Seven zero. All right, we are now moving on to special presentations. Next up is a special presentation on the K2, 2044 Comprehensive Plan Update. City Manager?
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam. So I think we have our special guest from Puget Sound Energy here, but Lindsay is going to introduce this, our senior planner. And this is a special presentation, but it's a little longer than our normal 10-minute because this is how the electrical infrastructure is going to be supporting our comprehensive plan.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lindsay Levine, and I'm a senior planner in the Planning and Building Department. I'm leading the updates to several sections of the comprehensive plan, including the utilities element. The lead for the sustainability, climate, and environment element and I have been coordinating with Puget Sound Energy on the complaint updates as they're a major partner as we plan for growth and transition away from fossil fuels. We invited PSE here tonight to share information on how they're planning for increased electrical demand and provide information on current timelines for new electric hookups. And now I'll pass it to Justin McConaughey, PSE Municipal Liaison Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Curtis, Deputy Mayor Arnold, and council members. Thank you for having us. My name is Justin McConaughey, Municipal Liaison Manager of PSE. My colleague, Matt Larson, who I think many of you work with, regrets not being able to be here. This is a popular night for council meetings, so he was double booked, but sends his regrets. I would like to quickly introduce the team. First, I will say I appreciate Lindsay and her team and work on this. It's been really helpful to have such an engaging city on reaching out to PSE and having questions, driving conversation around our role in your growth planning. So thank you to your staff. We're here and appreciate your interest in hearing from us and inviting us to talk tonight, mainly with us. And the focus of our presentation is going to be on how we're planning for system capacity growth in Kirkland and sort of our process around that. So we have our team and appreciate them all being here with us tonight. Yao Chiem Chow, supervisor with planning, as well as Colin O'Brien, our other supervisor. They'll get into the distinction of the two groups, as well as Christopher Gill and Sophie Pavletich, who are planners on the electric planning team. So without further ado, I'm going to let them spend the majority of our time talking about how we go about planning the electric system for you all.
You pretty much brought the whole staff with you.
We didn't want to leave anyone, leave anyone out.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having us. My name's Colin O'Brien. I'm the supervisor of Strategic System Planning Team at PSE. We plan the long-term needs of the electric system, primarily looking five to 10 years out to make sure we have adequate capacity and reliability on the systems to support growth and the needs of our customers. That involves anything at a substation, substation improvements, new substations, as well as anything transmission-related. So new transmission lines. And I'll let the rest of the team introduce themselves quickly.
Good evening. My name is Yao Chiem Chow, the supervisor of Regional System Planning. This is the distribution system of the electric system here at PSE. We are more responsible for specific hookups of large loads that we review to ensure that our smaller systems within three to five years have capacity to serve the needs.
Hello, my name is Christopher Gill. I'm the Regional System Planner for North King, East King, and Kitataas under Yao Chiem Chow.
And I'm Sophie Pavletich. I'm the Transmission Planner for North King, and I am under Colin.
Great. Yeah, so we'll jump in. We just prepared a few slides here to talk through our process. We'll start with a safety moment at PSE. Safety is at the center of everything we do. So we start any of our presentations with a quick safety moment, talk through our modern electric delivery system, what makes up the grid, how is it changing in modern times, talk through our planning process, and then give a quick update on the Kirkland specifics around the distribution and the transmission system. So our safety moment this evening is about safe ladder use. It's getting into spring. You have some beautiful weather out there. You might be feeling like you want to do some spring cleaning, go dust off the roof, or trim some trees, or kind of pick up some things around the house. And it's very important to make sure you're safe when you're doing these things. So some of our, I pulled this graphic here from OSHA and some things to note, always maintain three points of contact. So that's either two hands and a foot, or two feet and a hand. Make sure that you're on a stable level surface. That can be hard to do around the house sometimes, but it's very important to make sure you're safe. And of course, we are the electric company, so please watch out for overhead power lines. That can be very dangerous as well. I'll start with just some basics around what is the electric grid? What is it made up of? How does it operate? And the way the grid has been operating, operates today is similar to how it has been operating for many, many years. It starts with generation. So we generate energy somewhere, usually far from our population centers. That can be a wind farm or hydroelectric dam, for example. And we have to transport that energy from where it's generated to where it's used by residential, commercial, and industrial customers. And the way we do that is through our transmission and distribution systems. Our transmission system, you can think of it, if you want to use an analogy with roadways, those are the highways. They're the high-capacity, high-energy that are transporting energy long distances, using high voltage, trying to be as efficient and effective and reliable as possible. And then those connect to substations, which you can think of as an off-ramp maybe from our highway. So you off-ramp from your high voltage into a lower voltage, which we call distribution. That can be akin to your city roads where you're moving around the city to distribute that load, that energy around to where you get to individual services. Those are your maybe neighborhood streets where you then serve individual customers with the energy they need. Now, even though the basics have remained the same, in recent times, our electric grid has become much more intricate in terms of communication systems. We have smart switches that are able to operate automatically and reconfigure load to account for outages or to restore power in the case of a fault on the system. We have individual customers that are getting more and more advanced, more and more sophisticated, where you have smart meters, they have energy-efficient homes with devices that are monitoring power constantly. Maybe they have electric vehicles that have load management or charging schemes that they need to make sure that those are accounted for. So although the basics of the system are the same, it's getting more and more sophisticated in how customers use that energy. And as an electric company, we need to make sure that we have, that we're using that data effectively to plan the system to accommodate the way that the system's changing with distributed energy resources where there's more and more solar, more and more electric vehicles, electric transportation in the light, medium, heavy-duty sector. And that requires a robust planning process that considers where we are today, where we need to go in the future, and how we can do that safely and reliably. And I'll pass it to Yao here to talk a little bit about that process.
It's been really enlightening to be part of this process. So thank you for having us. I was really encouraged by just the diversity, equity, and inclusion that the students discussed, as well as you, Madam Mayor. So thank you for that. You'll see up here is our Energy Delivery System Planning Process. As a utility that manages a system from the Canadian border down to Olympia, this is why we have to bring the team, because of how big our service territory is. But one thing we've been trying to do is be really strategic about how we plan and to make our process modular. You'll see at the very top, we create an operating model where you see that black band that's saying equity and public engagement. That's something that PSE is very determined to do, how we spend our capital money, how we spend our ratepayers money. And as we know that with the changing system, we have to be able to change how we plan, how we study as well. And you'll see, you'll see here, we kind of try to break it down into several different blocks of evaluating the needs, determining different solutions, knowing that technology's advancing. We don't just put up power lines if we don't have to, if we can. How can we consider new technology? We try to do our best to spend the money, optimize, select projects with our optimization software, as well as making sure we complete them, six and seven and eight. As I go into the next slide, this is kind of very conceptual of how we plan, how we think about it. We get load requests, new buildings want to come in. We consider our forecasting. You'll see up there, general load growth, transportation electrification is probably outlined in the comprehensive plan with residential charging, business charging, what else is there, regional transportation, school buses. That's going to increase the load, it's going to increase our needs. And as we move into solutions, that's where we think about, how do we meet this? As PSE, we can build more wires, we can build more substations, but we're trying to be creative. With new products and services, we partner with customer renewables, energy efficiency programs, DER resources, system improvements. And just to touch real quick on the load growth that we, in the very middle, they're talking about transportation, electrification, as well as decarbonization, something that we're also committed to. As we take energy away from the natural gas, that's going to increase our electric load, and those are things that we consider in our forecasts and plan for. Now we'll jump into our distribution system and a little brief look into Kirkland.
Very brief look indeed. If you wanted to have this meeting go another couple hours... And says, our primary tool for modeling all of the increasing growth that we're seeing across the region is synergy. And it allows for us to, I guess you could say, account for all large load approvals, account for all transportation electrification across the distribution side grid. The graphic you see up on the screen are the substations and circuits that feed all the Kirkland area and surrounding suburbs under your purview. I know they might look like a bunch of parallel and perpendicular squiggles, but I promise you that's roads, that's people's homes, people's businesses, and much of the rest of the infrastructure that we contribute to. This program runs specific load flow simulations that allow for us to account for all grid deficiencies and build out projects and solutions that are able to incorporate the fix need, the fixes needed to bring our capacity up to par. This program allows us to forecast up to 10 years in the future pretty reliably when accounting for all factors. As a little drill down, I have included a, like, I know it's all black background and multicolor, multicolor lines on the screen. All the circuits, all the substations, they do interact with the real world, an overlay of Google Earth here will show you. That's Kirkland City Hall and how it interacts with the local distribution grid. This can go, this can scale all the way down from individual homes, individual businesses, all the way out to region-wide models. Moving forward, we have, we're ensuring that all large load applications that are sent through PSE systems are tracked and incorporated into all of our models moving forward. Between the years of 2024 and 2026, we have 34 planned distribution projects of targeted capacity and reliability that are set to take place with all attached substations and circuits. And we are very focused on building out all of the infrastructure to, in order to serve all the future growth that we're definitely going to be seeing in this area. Moving forward as we transition from the distribution into the transmission system, am I handing this over to you, Colin?
Thanks, Chris. So this chart, similarly to what Chris just showed with the distribution system, this shows where our substations are located, as well as the current and forecasted loading we have at each of the six substations that serve the city of Kirkland. So you could see here that that dark green is where we're at at our most recent peak season. That's how we typically evaluate where we have needs as we look at the worst-case scenario. And if we can serve all of our customers in that time, we know every other day of the year is going to be okay. So you can see here that a lot of our substations are right around that 15 to 20 MVA load, which is a good place for them to be. Most of those have a capacity of between 25 and 30 MVA, so that allows some operational flexibility, we call it, in order to switch load around during outages to accommodate customers and that sort of thing. I will note that lighter green bar on top is our forecasted growth. So those are customers coming onto the system. And if you'll notice, it's concentrated there at our Totem Substation and our Wanita Substation, which is up near the Totem Lake area. We have a lot of large customers, major customers that come in with significant load requests in that area. So we're currently evaluating potential alternatives to bolster the system in that area, add capacity so we can serve the customers as they come in and provide that safe, reliable, and maintain operational flexibility to ensure that there's a reliable system as well. I will say that then second beyond that is that Norkirk Substation is starting to creep up a little bit. So that's also something we're evaluating for potential infrastructure improvements. And with that, I'll, we'll give a quick look into the transmission system.
Yes, I'm going to go over just a brief look at the transmission, which serves the underlying distribution that we've talked about already. Within the city of Kirkland, there are two transmission lines that serve the region as importing power. And you can see some of the substations we've been talking about and how they're interconnected, Totem and Norkirk towards the center. Our most recently completed project is the Sammamish-Wanita project. That was to increase capacity and reliability for the Totem Substation, building a new transmission line, moving the Totem Sub onto this new line. And that was just energized at the end of 2023. Looking to the future, future transmission work to improve capacity in the area is going to be around the Wanita-Morlands area. The capacity feeding into the Morlands area is limited by some line sections between Wanita and Morlands, so that is some future work coming to help increase the capacity that will serve city of Kirkland as well.
And so that concludes our planning discussion here. And so we'll introduce our colleague, John Phillips, to discuss our customer and system projects and customer hookups.
All right. Thank you. My name is John Phillips. I'm the manager of Customer and System Projects at PSE. Our team is responsible for... System Projects at PSC. Our team is responsible for, in their analogy, basically the driveways. So we connect customers to the grid. So our team covers basically both customer-requested gas and electric projects. My team covers everything from I-90 to the Canadian border. I have about 150 people on my team, between project managers and engineers that are working on these projects. We do everything from residential, commercial, multifamily, including public improvement projects. So projects that the Save Kirkland Road Projects, our team handles that as well. We do about 10,000 projects a year across PSC for, over both fuels. Our team covers everything from intake. We have a standalone call center down in Tacoma that just handles new construction requests. They handle some of the work, but if it's more complex, then they pass it on my team. Our team covers project management, design, permitting easements. I didn't include there, but collecting payments, agreements as well, and then scheduling the projects with our, with our construction crews. Cycle times, just to give a sense, you know, typical residential, small, commercial projects for us take four to six months. That's pretty, pretty normal for the larger projects, where probably 12 months or so. The larger commercial multifamily is pretty typical, cross-speed of sound energy. I put some stuff here for, specific to Kirkland. So again, just kind of for Kirkland, I was kind of looking at some data. It's well over 200-plus projects between gas and electric, split fairly evenly. Not all of those are equal. We heard earlier about some of those big projects. So one customer might have way, a lot more load than another, depending on, on the type of customer they are. So as I mentioned, we're doing commercial, but also all the residential as well. As we've heard earlier, the theme for most of the residential work is infill. Nothing, no surprise to you. A lot of houses are being torn down. As I say, we're rebuilding Bellevue and Kirkland and Seattle, one, one house at a time. Generally, the houses going in are larger, loads are now increasing. You know, we went, we were in a phase of, while there's, they're more efficient, they're larger, and now we're seeing EVs, other loads that are increasing the loads. Plus, we're seeing three units on where there was one unit. So we're seeing intensity of, of load in the area. Because of that, you know, where our older system, we're typically on most projects, we're having to make some, some type of upgrade. So that, that partially why it takes as long as it does. There really aren't very many simple projects in Save Kirkland. Other factors, there's the underground ordinance, which is not abnormal. That's Kirkland's in line with a number of the other cities and especially in King County. So again, just requires usually a change in our wires for each project. So again, often that'll require trenching and into the right-of-way and requiring street use permits. So as I mentioned, most of our projects are complex. So we're usually having to do designs, traffic control plans, submitting them for the permitting with the city of Kirkland. And just to give you a feel, typical permit for the city of Kirkland, street use permits, about five weeks, which really is, isn't, was fairly normal for, for most of the jurisdictions we work with. But just to give you a sense of what, what our group does and typical project that we see. Oh, and then, did we take any questions?
I need my cue. Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So thank you all for being here. It's, and the entire team here. And this is a really important topic, obviously, in providing a resilient electric grid is critical for our future needs and obviously for our future planning needs around our comp plan and sustainability goals. One thing, it was interesting, as I was kind of preparing for this council meeting, I saw an article in the New York Times, came out, I think on Friday, and the title of it was, I don't know if you've seen it, "A New Surge in Power Use Is Threatening U.S. Climate Goals." And it talks about how demand for electricity has largely stayed flat over the last two decades because consumers have invested in energy-efficient appliances and other means. And so that's kind of held the, the demand steady. But, but now a demand has begun to surge. Electric utilities have nearly doubled their forecasts in how much power they need by 2028 because of the explosion in data centers, resurgence in manufacturing, and obviously electric vehicles. And there's a quote from a person from the Electric Power Research Institute that said, "The numbers we're seeing are pretty crazy," which that was, that was kind of concerning to quote. "A swelling appetite for electricity, you know, really jeopardizes the country's plans to fight climate change. Some utilities are even considering fossil fuel capacity again because cleaner alternatives aren't growing fast enough." So, you know, obviously, the electric grid is, is something that's, I would say, in my time on council is, is not something that's well-understood, or, you know, there's not a lot of transparency to it, like other utilities. You know, we have oversight of sewer water, garbage, you know, transportation, electric, electricity isn't one of them necessarily, but it's obviously critical for our goals. I just was curious what your response is to an article like that. Is that reflective of what we're seeing in the Pacific Northwest? Or is that something that's largely like East Coast, Midwest? Or, or are they misinformed?
No, I, I think, you know, we're in, we're entering into, you know, some unknown waters with, especially like transportation, just as a simple, right, that's a deflection where, you know, if, if we truly are becoming the gas stations of, of the, the new, the new gas stations, it is a different world of, of energy. I think there'll be a, a lot of focus in the coming is, is really engaging with customer. I think customers are going to be the solution. And that's adjusting customer load, time of use load. Puget's working on a number of customer programs to encourage solar storage and ways to better use that to help levelize the usage and avoiding peaks. And it's really that capacity, that peak demand that we plan our system to, and that the generation's got to be, needs to be built for. So everything we can do to levelize that load. And so you'll see a lot of effort all the way down to the customer to, to, to reduce that demand. And one thing, just to give you an example, Puget just has recently incorporated a demand-side management program where it allows us to call on customers to reduce demand during high, high peaks or high, which, which really equates to high greenhouse gas usage because the marginal power is, is typically carbon. So we're, we just saw that substation being about 25 megawatts. That's how much load we can call on today, one from zero to 25 megawatts. Within months, we were able to solicit that kind of load. And so we're planning to, we're, we're forecasting we can, within several years, get up to over 100 megawatts of, of load. So that's one way we're looking at ways to, to balance the, the load, the load on the system versus. So there's tools, it's just, and developing those takes time. So I'm hopeful.
Good, good. Well, thank you. Thank you for that.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the expertise and brainpower you bring to us tonight. You mentioned, as you're looking at the distribution system that you forecast 10 years out, we have made some significant changes in Kirkland around the Bus Rapid Transit Station area with some major up zones. We're in the middle of our comprehensive plan, which also housing capacity is something we're looking at in earnest. How's the coordination between your future planning and our future planning as far as what we're looking at for housing and job capacity?
Great question. One, you know, one of the slides we show is, we, it's kind of two ways. We have, we use a software called LoadSeer, which is a proprietary company. They do a lot of internet scraping of what's the zoning, what do we anticipate, what are the satellite images showing us, where's the trends going? So that's one way we kind of try to for, use that to forecast. But the other way that we try to do it is through straight-up applications and ongoing communications and partnerships. That's, that's what we're seeing really driving a lot of our big blocky load growths. And I would say with, with the development, the comprehensive plans, you're talking about bringing jobs in and homes in, that, that would fall under the LoadSeer process. We didn't, we didn't capture any pictures of it, but it's pretty cool, some heat maps, be able to see if I'm dragging it from one year to 10 years, what does that look like? And that allows us to be more localized in our planning.
Yeah, my only comment to that is whatever exists for existing zoning is going to change. So you may need to be prepared for a bump in some areas or some neighborhoods.
That's good. That's why I brought Chris here.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you. My questions revolve around natural gas, HB 1589. And these, these changes in the law and changes in policy have happened so quickly that I think a lot of people are uncertain about the future of natural gas, the future of their appliances, the future of their ability to heat their homes, the future of their fireplaces and ranges, and the future of their ability to receive natural gas. And I just wanted to ask you a question. I know this bill passed, but in a different format than it was originally submitted in. But I just wanted to know if you had any, any thoughts on that, feedback on that?
And I'll, I'll speak for the team as best I can on it. But, but you're right, it didn't, the initial provisions were no new gas service basically going forward. And those, those were pulled from the bill. So, as well as a right to serve or requirement to serve, and that was pulled from the bill too. So PSC is supportive of, you know, of providing gas service to its customers. It's a very viable energy source. It helps us with capacity peaking. And so at this point, we're, you know, we're supportive of, you know, we're maintaining and, and continuing to serve customers with gas.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I hope you, thanks for keeping, please keep us updated. I know this is ever-changing, but I know a lot of people are dependent on this service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Everyone, thank you so much for spending the evening with us. That was very helpful. I assume we have a copy of your slides? Yeah. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving to the consent calendar. Unless there is an objection, I'm going to pull item A, approval of the minutes from the consent calendar at the request of staff. Those minutes will instead be presented at the next regular meeting.
Oh, okay.
Are there any objections?
I, well, I have an item on the consent calendar that I, okay.
I was going to get to you. So, any objections about me pulling the minutes? Okay. Before we have a motion on the consent, I would ask Deputy Mayor to present audit of accounts.
And Madam Mayor, we had payroll in the amount of $4,253,716.30, and bills in the amount of $7,630,339.63.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Second?
Objection.
I, I was going to get to you next.
All right.
I haven't forgotten. All right. So it's been moved by Councilmember Sweet. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Deputy Mayor Arnold, are there any questions, comments, or corrections to the consent calendar? Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Yes, I wish to pull from the consent calendar, the leadership east side funding issue.
Which is 8H2. If there are no objections, we will move that to item 9F. So
Thank you.
The question is now on the motion to approve the revised consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The consent calendar is approved, and we have added a business item 9F. We are now going to move into our business agenda. I see Director Zwagstra walking up eagerly. So we are now moving to our business agenda. The first item up is item 6B. That's not right. It is 6B. 9B. I have a 6 in my script, just so everybody knows, not the glasses. On the community pool next steps, city manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to remind everyone that 9A was the Ravenway, which we moved and took action on earlier. So we are now on 9B, the community pool next step. So we have a resolution for council to look at based on the community feedback we received from our surveys and stakeholder work and discussions that we had at the council retreat. And so here to give you that presentation is our Director of Community Parks and Community Services, Lynn Zwagstra.
Welcome. I seem to be having rogue clicks or something here. I'm not sure. So there's no delay. We'll seek a little bit of help. I'm not beyond asking for help. So, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council, I'm here this evening to conclude our efforts towards the 2024 exploration of a community pool ballot measure. After failure of Kirkland Proposition 1 last November, council sought feedback from the community about why the ballot measure failed and what the community's priorities are going forward. We did, in fact, receive a great deal of feedback, all of which can be found on our website in the form of surveys and also notes from community meetings. Should anyone like to dive into the details of that data? All of that feedback led council towards suspending the continued exploration of a community pool for 2024. Council asked for a resolution that would wrap up the efforts to date and provide some direction for next steps going forward. The resolution accomplishes three actions, and those can be seen on the screen. Those three actions are also listed in detail in the memo and in the resolution. So on that note, I would turn it over to Madam Mayor for discussion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor.
I will kick us off by moving Resolution 5625.
Second.
And while this resolution, as Director Zwagstra has mentioned, closes the discussion on a, on a ballot measure, what we've learned through this process is, yes, there's community interest in a pool, but a reluctance to, to fund the full cost, as we heard during public comment today. And, but it doesn't, because of that, it doesn't mean that the community isn't interested and doesn't recognize the needs. And as was suggested, I want to make sure that we're looking for opportunities to pursue regionally and partner. So I have an amendment that I want to offer to Resolution 5625. On, oh, great, it's on the screen, so I don't have to read it. Basically, to add a whereas clause, talking about the King County efforts to fund planning, and add some direction for the city manager to pursue funding from the existing parks levy funding, as well as advocate for future parks levy funding in this area. So I would like to move to amend Resolution 5625 as shown on the screen.
Thank you. Thank you. It has been moved to amend Resolution 5624.
Sorry, I misspoke.
By Deputy Mayor Arnold and second by Councilmember Falcone. Any further comments? Okay, we are going to take a, yes. Oh, Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just want to thank Deputy Mayor for adding, for proposing this amendment tonight. You know, I'm going to be one of the thousands of parents online tomorrow morning at 6:59 a.m., hoping to get my kids into swim lessons at the Peter Kirk Pool. You know, for most of our years, we are, you know, of the 10,000 folks on the waitlist for those swim lessons. So fingers crossed for all of us to want them tomorrow morning. And also, I'm aware of, you know, another local pool, whereas the only place that my kids have consistently been able to get off the waitlist and to swim lessons is in a neighboring school district. And discussions are looking like they're going to be closing that pool. So I just wanted to So I just wanted to share that context and really the importance of continuing this resolution and continuing to pursue other options for the aquatics need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the question is on the amendment to the motion made by Deputy Mayor Arnold, second by Councilmember Falcone. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment carries seven zero. The question is on the Resolution 5624. All those in favor say, oh, there's another amendment. Oh, there's another, Councilmember Pascal.
I wanted to discuss the main resolution. I don't have an amendment. What's the one else?
Okay, go ahead.
So on the, on the main resolution, definitely support, support this. It's tough to support. I mean, definitely support a pool, just not the right time, I think we heard from the voters. I do think it's prudent to continue to explore the Peter Kirk Pool as a year-round facility. And I guess what I would ask as we move into that direction is to not, I know there's been some talk about putting a bubble over it. I'd like to look at all different types of options, though, that we can do to increase the capacity. Perhaps, you know, could you expand it to add a warm water therapy pool, you know, next to it, or something like that, so that it's not just making it a year-round facility, but it's expanding the facility. So I hope that that would be part of any future evaluation of the Peter Kirk Pool. And then, I know this isn't part of the resolution, but I also hope that we continue to look at the North Kirkland Community Center. That was something that we said we would do as part of the ballot discussion and what that future of that building is. And I assume that's in the work program, but that's, that's something that we don't want to forget about as well.
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. The question is on the resolution, the Resolution 5624, suspending further exploration of a community pool ballot measure in 2024 and authorizing the city manager to develop options for year-round use of the Peter Kirk Pool and alternate uses of the city-owned Houghton Park and Ride property. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution passes seven zero. Lynn, before you go. Thank you. This was a lot of hard work by you and your staff over the past year. I sincerely thank you for all the effort that everyone made on this ballot measure, putting it together. I also want to thank the members of PFEC. Thank you, Susan, for all the work that you did on this. PFEC was a group of 45 community members from all walks of life in Kirkland. Parents, parents of school-aged children, seniors, youth, businesses, the Kirkland Chamber, the Kirkland Downtown Association, the Kirkland Parks and Community Foundation, service clubs such as Kiwanis, sports representatives, the school district, our neighbor associations, and more. Everyone had a voice in this ballot measure. I'm disappointed it didn't pass, but what's clear is the need in the community continues. So I'm looking forward to what we can develop with using the facilities that we have and potential partnerships in the future. But mainly, I wanted to sincerely express my thanks to you.
Thank you, Mary Curtis.
All right. Does everybody want a quick break? The next agenda item is going to take a little bit longer. Let's come back at 9:10. All right, we're back after a quick little break. Our next item on business is on the Houghton Park and Ride interim use options. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So before I turn this over to John Lloyd, our Deputy Director of Parks and Community Services, since this is about intermusees, I wanted to just briefly speak to the issue of the Kraken proposal that the council received. When we originally talked about this concept, it was before that was something that you all had received as a council. And so we're not talking about the Kraken proposal tonight. We are talking about interim uses for any future use, but what's going to happen the next one to three years. So the only thing that that materially affects in this particular proposal is one of the options we had talked about before was potentially leasing a chunk of the site for several years to wash that as part of their development project. So if we do continue to explore the Kraken option, that would be one of the options that we probably would look at long-term. I do want to say that, to anyone listening, that no decisions have been made about the Kraken. We have assembled a staff team that's interdepartmental that has parks and planning and finance, and the city manager's office and the city attorney's office. We're going to start exploring what was sent. And I know council members are going to have a chance to talk to the Kraken as well. But nothing is going to happen anytime soon with that proposal without it coming back with options and discussion with the council and the community. So just wanted to say that, because I know a lot of people are thinking this might be a presentation, and that's not the intent tonight. So.
Thank you.
I have to answer any questions on that before I turn it over to John.
Looks like we're okay.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll talk about what we are proposing tonight, which is interim uses of the park and ride. And so here is John Lloyd.
Welcome, John.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I have a relatively brief presentation for you tonight. I only have nine slides. And tonight's presentation is a follow-up from our January 16 meeting, when I presented the initial concepts for short-term use of the Houghton Park and Ride site. Based on your feedback from that meeting, we've gone back to the drawing board and gathered more information on some of those options, which I will run through in the subsequent slides. So as City Manager Tripple just mentioned, tonight I'm focusing on options that can be implemented relatively quickly and that are not permanent. As we discussed in January, the site is ideal for temporary park amenities and recreational programming, including pickleball courts, a skate park, a bicycle playground, and recreation, community events, and programs. One thing that is new to the list since the last time we spoke is the community garden element. And I'm going to give you a few more details on all of these elements here in the next few slides. But as City Manager Tripple just said, I will not be discussing more permanent or long-term uses of the site, including the Kraken's proposal tonight. The community did make some other suggestions that we evaluated and decided not to pursue, things like a playground, electrical vehicle charging stations, and some volleyball courts were some of those suggestions. I always think those are great ideas and could be a wonderful addition to the site. They're definitely more suited for more permanent development of the site rather than short-term use. So with that, I'm going to jump right in. I'm going to go through all those different elements, and I've got a slide that breaks them all down and shows it all, the big site plan, like you'll see in the memo. But the first and one of the highest things that I've heard about or requested is additional pickleball courts. We discussed a few options for the construction of the pickleball courts at the Park and Ride site in January. And based on the pros and cons of each option, we recommend installing what I was calling semi-permanent asphalt courts, similar to what is shown in the pictures on the right-hand side of the slide. While the playing surface is not exactly temporary or portable, all the equipment, the nets, the posts, and all the other related equipment could be moved to a new location in the future. But obviously, the asphalt surface itself would be a little more challenging to move. One thing I would like to note, as you'll notice on the site overview picture on the left-hand side of the screen, the pickleball courts have shifted to the middle two parking bays from where they were on the January proposal, which is the left-most parking bay and the one adjacent to it. Since we met in January, we've met onsite with Public Works to evaluate the site, and we determined that those two parking bays are actually the best and most suitable for the pickleball courts, based on the existing grade onsite, as well as the curbs from the median islands will make it actually a little easier to fill in and create a more flat playing surface for pickleball. We don't anticipate having to take out any of the center islands or removing any of the trees with any of this work, just to kind of put that on the table as well. But so, wanted to point that out. Public Works anticipates this work taking about one week to complete. And if we give them the green light relatively quickly, they said they should be able to get the courts installed by June. However, any delays of a significant nature could push the work out until October after slurry prep and street overlay work is completed. So if we want to get those courts done for the summer, we want to make sure we get the ball rolling relatively quickly on those. The other major element that was discussed in January was the skate park bike, skate park bike playground and pump track. Since January, we've worked with the vendor, and he's put together a formal proposal utilizing the northernmost portion of the site, as shown here. The plan works with the existing site conditions, including the islands and the grades on the site, and provides a variety of features and elements for all skill levels and abilities. The beauty of this system that we've selected is that it is modular and can be relocated in the future as long-term plans are developed for the site. While we don't necessarily have a location identified for where these could go in the future, really, it could be broken apart. There's a few small skate parks or a different redevelopment project could happen, or we could relocate the whole thing. As I mentioned in the memo, I've been working with the vendor to refine their proposal slightly to reduce the costs. And in the last two weeks, he has come back and said, yes, we can do that. We'll get the cost down to under 350. But I would like to point out that their proposal does not include the street painting, the street lines that you see in the image for the bicycle playground. We would do that internally. They said they could do it, but it's going to be way more expensive than if we just do it ourselves or find a contractor locally to do it. So they recommended, actually, we just take care of ourselves. And that's that kind of area that falls around the top, top corner of the site. The vendor did let me know that their schedule is starting to fill up. Depending on how quickly we can get the paperwork processed and a contract in place, they anticipate they would have this completed by the end of July, be the timeline for these elements. As I mentioned earlier, community gardens were not included in our original proposal. However, I did receive a few inquiries and requests from the community, including the Bridle Trails Neighborhood Association, about adding these to the project. We believe we can accommodate at least 22 plots, but the exact number will depend on the exact size of the individual gardens once they are built onsite. We would coordinate the installation of the community gardens with the Public Works' work on the pickleball courts, if we were a good operation to proceed to that, because we would have them scrape off the asphalt at the same time as they're working on the leveling, the parking lot for the courts. By removing the asphalt, it will allow for better drainage, and we would be able to then construct the individual plots in the area shown in your memo on the left-hand side of the parking lot. Typically, we wouldn't consider these plots to be removable or removable, but depending on how long they're in place, the materials could definitely be relocated in the future. Alternatively, we are looking into more modular systems that we could just buy off the shelf and more easily install and more easily move in the future. And they also do make some taller ones or some stand-up versions that might be of interest to the community. So we're going to continue to evaluate those options if community gardens is of interest to council. And with today being the first day of spring, it's, we would want to get to work on these as soon as possible to maximize the potential growing season, because the longer we wait, the longer it's going to take to get those leased out or rented out for the season, and potentially, people won't get as much bang for their buck as they would. And then lastly, as mentioned in January, the pickleball courts and the skate park elements could be utilized by the Recreation Division to provide camps, lessons, tournaments, or other events. Currently, any scheduled programming that we have for pickleball or skateboarding does take over the, our only dedicated pickleball courts or skate park in our system. Additionally, we could host a variety of different events. I mean, these are things that we would do within our current budget and staffing levels, a few drive-in movies, truck or treat events, flea markets, recycling events, and things of that nature. So the images on the screen are the drive-in movies, the flea markets, the chalk art festivals, food truck festivals, things of that nature. Things that aren't pictured on the screen would be things like the Styro Fest or Electronics Recycling Event. We've hosted those at North Kirkland Community Center parking lot, and this could be a good opportunity to host those on the southern end of town as well. So then this is the overall site plan that we're proposing, or that would make use of the elements that we've discussed. While not identified on the image, we would incorporate tables, benches. We were trying to make sure there's some shade elements included on the site for parents and participants that are not actively participating. So in all there, so not just at the pickleball courts, not just at the community gardens, but also up in the skate park area as well. I'm not going into a lot of detail, but there is potential revenue opportunities with the site through leasing a portion of it for construction staging or really just any other rentals. Obviously, the rental depends on, or the rental, potential revenue depends on how much space is utilized and the duration of the lease. So short-term leases would generate a little less, and long-term leases would generate a little bit more. And as outlined in the memo, that could be up to close to $350,000, $400,000, depending on how long and how much space is utilized. But obviously, that also all depends on what happens with the Kraken proposal. So with that being said, these were all outlined in the memo, but just to summarize the various elements that we discussed, pickleball courts, depending on options, ranging between about $70,000 and $85,000. Skate park and bike amenities, $350,000. Community gardens, 15. And then the, a lot of the site amenities and contingencies bring our total back up to a little over half a million dollars. Additionally, not covered in much detail this round, but we did discuss ongoing maintenance of the site. We would activate the restroom facility that's out there and make that available to the public, as well as provide regular trash service onsite if the site was turned into a park. And we project that to cost about $35,000 annually. So with that being said, we are asking if council wants to proceed with any of the recommended options for interim use, or do you want us to evaluate any further options? With that, I will turn it over to you all for questions.
Thank you. Who would like to go first?
So, Madam Mayor?
City manager?
All right, just, one thing I just wanted to add, since you saw the cost sheet, is that, well, this is also in the memo, but that all of the capital elements of it, not the operating house, but all the capital elements, would qualify for park impact fees, which we have quite a significant reserve. So our recommendation, these are expansive programs, expanding amenities to the community. So we would be able to do these with a pretty specific dedicated fund, so this wouldn't compete with the general fund.
Thank you. That was my, that was my, on my question list. Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you. While I'm generally supportive of temporary uses to activate spaces, I would be concerned that we would have to take away whatever we give our community if we, in a short amount of time, find a use for that space. And so then what? We take away community gardens, we take away skate parks, we take away pickleball courts, and then where does, where does that go? So I think it would be helpful to have a little bit of a timeline on how long of a period we foresee this space to be inactive and whether or not activating it is worth the time. Thank you.
So I think, just a very quick overview, I think in any use that we'd be looking at, we're probably looking at over a year before anything would be on a site like that. So we have certainly that, and it could, it could be longer, depending on what happens. So, but that's something we can refine when we come back to the council.
Okay. And I mean, I just, I just foresee us having to take away community gardens and take away things that were there and not knowing how, where to relocate those, those temporary uses that people had relied on.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I agree with the overall thinking, I think, that Councilmember Tim Chisen has there in that this is really cool stuff, right? I do support the things that are being proposed here by staff. I'm really happy to see the community gardens added. I know that's something that some community members really wanted to see happen and really advocated for. I know many of us have heard from a lot of community members, the councilmembers and staff have, on that desire. And, and it seems like something that just makes sense. It's relatively low cost. And I do want to just reiterate that I really appreciate, I said this, I think, the last time we talked about this, I really appreciate that these items are mostly repurposable. Is that the right word? They can, we can be, they can be reused at other locations. I do think that we should start thinking about potential other locations after this and be prepared to have those conversations so we have some answers to give to the public when they ask. I know I mentioned this the last time we talked about this, but I see signage on here. I hope some of that signage is going to say temporary in big, bold letters so that we really manage expectations with the community, that these are temp, these are awesome uses, and these are temporary uses, because we are looking at potential long-term plans for this site. We want to make the best use of tax dollars and public resources and make sure that we are being thoughtful about what we do long-term with this site. are being thoughtful about what we do long-term with this site. And while we're doing that, we don't want it to be wasted space. We want to really provide things for the community that the community wants and needs during that time as well. So anyway, I just want to be really thoughtful that we manage expectations. I know there's some, you know, recent, somewhat recent examples of when we did provide a really cool amenity that was intended to be temporary, and it was really challenging to pull that back once we had planned to do so. And so again, I just want us to really be more thoughtful about how we manage that. I would hope that just saying it from here, from the dais, would do so, but lo and behold, I know that not that many people are watching, and so.
That's a great suggestion, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, so anyway, I just want to say that again, because I think it's really, really, really important. I want to set us up for success in this. John, I really appreciated you mentioning the shade with the benches, too. I liked seeing the benches in there. I do want us to be really thoughtful that we need cover from both sun and rain, right? That that's really important because of our climate here and that we make sure that the location makes sense, right? You mentioned having locations throughout, which I really appreciate. I think it would be fruitful to just, you know, ask a few people who you know are potential users to come out and walk the site and be like, hey, does this make sense? Does this make sense? And to be really thoughtful as we're putting in benches and some sort of covers. This is something we've heard from residents with some of our recent improvements for the community that they wish that we had more cover there. We've responded to that in some of our parks, and I'm really thankful for that. So I just want to make sure we're thinking ahead on that, and I don't know what cost that would be. I don't know that the trees are enough. We might need something else as part of that. So I just want us to think through that. So yay on benches. Let's make sure we're thoughtful on location and cover. And I think that covers all of my thoughts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I shared my colleagues' concerns about installing these facilities and then removing them a short time later, that, you know, obviously can be painful. And then also the other concern about using tax dollars wisely. But I think the staff has indicated that, you know, these are modular and can be used elsewhere, so that's great, and I'm supportive of the proposal here. And I like Councilmember Falcone's idea about big signage, noting that it's temporary. And the question I had for you, John, was around security, around, you know, ensuring that other activities don't occur, that interrupt or affect people's usage of this area. How, have you given that any thought? Is that included in the costs at all? Or is that?
No, we haven't, we haven't done much on security. Part of our general operations, just having a presence there, I think, would help alleviate a lot of concerns, but we could look into more robust features like security cameras or automated gates and things of that sort.
I'm just curious if it was a concern of parks, yeah, or not? That's not something that.
It's always a concern, but I think sometimes there's, there's a fine line where you have to, you can only stop so many things, and so you don't have great security features in a lot of our parks.
Yeah, I just didn't know, because they're modular and you can move the features and stuff, I didn't know if there was more concern about that. That was kind of the question. Sorry, I wasn't.
And the skating elements, just to clarify what I've mentioned in January, is they're modular, but they're not easily movable. The vendor actually suggested they come back out and move them, and it's not something you just get a forklift and move them yourself. Even it's, it's a pretty robust process, it sounds like, to move those things, but they're easily moved.
Okay.
Relative.
Thank you for that. And then just kind of the final comment, I know that we're not talking about tonight, but I'm going to talk about it. I do, really do want to seriously consider the Kraken proposal, and I want to thank the team for introducing the proposal to the city. I think one of the things that I know I was aware of through the Aquatic Center process was people had an expectation that we develop partnerships in the community to reduce costs to the city, but to provide additional benefits to the community. And so there's a lot more discussion that has to happen there. No question about public benefits and hearing from all members of the community about their thoughts and on that proposal, but I just wanted to put it out there that I think that we do need to seriously consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then I will go. I also, you know, it's already been said, we have to set expectations that this is a temporary usage. It would be smart if we can tell people, when this is moved, it's going to this park, so that people know where things are happening. It's going to get hot up there. So I'm really concerned about shade. I'm also concerned about access to water fountains and that sort of thing, and we haven't talked about that. I know we've talked about water access for the community gardens, but we need to think about water access for the people. Love, no surprise, love the community gardens. I would advocate for the taller beds because they're more accessible to different, different abilities. And I also would advocate for wider paths that can accommodate wheelchairs and walkers and that sort of thing. Oh, and I believe that you said that there will be fencing around the pickleball courts. Will there be fencing around the community gardens? How do we keep other skateboards, other things, out of the community gardens? And along the security comments of Councilmember Pascal, we do have lights up there. I assume that we're planning on closing the park, like all of our parks, at dusk and then closing the gate. Is that what we're thinking now? All right.
That's my assumption, yes.
Okay. And that was it? Thank you. I think that this is a great short-term use. We're going to say that over and over again. A short-term use for this community asset. I think the community would be thrilled to use it, and it's better than leaving it empty over the next year-plus. So thank you for bringing this forward.
You're welcome.
All righty.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to consider the Atain Housing funding request. City Manager.
Thank you. So just to wrap up that last topic, so what we'll do now is bring back a fiscal note to the next council meeting to execute the intermuses with reflecting all the comments that we received from the council. So the next item is we have an opportunity to help attain housing and save some affordable housing here in the city of Kirkland. We have a brief presentation, since this topic sort of emerged on us. Adam Weinstein, our Director of Planning and Building, is going to give the presentation. But we also have Brian Hughes, who is the interim Executive Director of Atain Housing, as well as the Chair of Atain Housing here, and they're happy to answer questions from the council if you have any about Atain specifically.
Thank you, City Manager. Before we move forward, Councilmember Black, did you have a question?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I did wonder if the staff got the direction they needed on the construction rental aspect of the last proposal?
Well, I think what we were saying is we're going to bring you options based on what we might know.
Okay.
So I think proceed, but make sure that if whatever doesn't constrain any future choices was sort of my interpretation.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Okay.
Great. All right, good evening, Mayor Curtis, and Deputy Mayor Arnold, and council members. So here to talk tonight about preserving a very precious commodity, which is affordable housing in the city. We've talked a lot in the comp plan process about how much affordable housing we need to build over the next 20 years. Part of the solution to the crisis is also preserving the existing housing that we have. And this proposal involves Atain Housing. As you all know, they're a very important affordable housing provider in Kirkland. There are 37 units of housing that they operate in Kirkland and Bellevue, and 29 units are located here in Kirkland. Atain has been experiencing operational deficits, and they've developed a plan with Arch to continue operating their affordable housing units and to create partnerships to transfer their assets that would cost $168,000. The concept is that Arch and Atain would work on a long-term plan to continue operating the 37 units as affordable housing before transferring them to a different entity. Because the units are worth about $500,000 each, that's about how much it might cost to purchase an affordable housing unit these days. We believe that $168,000 to maintain this housing as affordable housing in perpetuity, hopefully, is a good use of public funds. And by approving the fiscal note, that's discussed in the staff report, basically, we're recognizing that this would be funded by general fund interest earnings above that which we budgeted. And then, sorry, I totally denied events the slide. Sorry about that. Those points that I just talked about were on this slide. And the last slide that I have is just a map showing all the existing Atain affordable housing units in Kirkland. And with that, we're happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Sure. They are experiencing operational deficits. That means they have lost a significant amount of money over the recent past. And now we're in a situation where we have an emergency on our hands, basically. I'd like to know when they knew about this, when they told us about this, and if we provide the $168,000 that's requested, how we know that they're not going to request more money in three months, and how we secure, secure that money and know that that money is in a place where we have access to recoup our money.
If I may, just, Brian, before you start, so one of the things I want to say about the securing of the money that the city might invest is, in the packet, you saw a letter from Arch about making this essentially a contingent grant or a recoverable grant. And so if the council gives permission to proceed with the fiscal note, what we would be doing between now and the end of March is working on a direct agreement that's drafted by Arch, reviewed by our city attorney, that would be with us and Atain, whereby the money that we fronted would also be essentially a lien on any of the properties. So if the properties had to be sold, we'd get paid back. But if the conditions of attaining all the assets and keeping people housed are met, then the grant would just be to make sure that that happens. So so as I say, we are trying to make sure there's some protections for the money that we invest, and that's part of the idea, but I'll also turn it over to Brian for the other questions. Thank you, Brian.
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you so much for having us here tonight and for considering this request on such short notice. I just want to kind of, for the Atain Board, on behalf of them, I just want to say thank you for that. To your question regarding when Atain knew about the funding issue. So I began January 1st as the interim Executive Director, and as part of my role as interim Executive Director, what I do is I come in and I do an assessment. And so came in and did an assessment at that time and looked at the finances over the last couple of years. And when I looked at the finances over the last couple of years, over the first about month and a half that I was there, at the end determined that Atain had been in a position where they had lost money and weren't going to be able to fully recover. And so at that point, the recommendation was to move forward, to look for a strategic partner. So as soon as, as soon as I was aware and the board had been kind of notified as to my assessment, we moved forward from there and reached out.
I'll say that the city of Kirkland was contacted in early March, just before our council retreat, or late February, just before our council retreat, by Arch, saying the conversations had started with Atain and was there ways that we could develop some
That answer your question? Anyone else? Councilmember Pascal?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here, by the way. I appreciate it. You know, I guess when I was looking at this, I don't have a ton of familiarity with Atain Housing. I mean, I know I've attended fundraising events in the past, have supported it personally, your organization. I fully support the mission and what you do, but I don't really have, you know, insight into how you'll kind of move on from, you know, the issue at hand today and find that strategic partnership and kind of what that, the next steps look like. Could you, could you mind kind of maybe share a little bit about what those next steps entail?
Absolutely. So, so, good question. So as a matter of fact, just today, Atain was able to enter into an agreement with HopeLink for, it was a program management agreement. So therefore, you know, moving forward for the next six months, HopeLink will continue to operate the housing and continue to manage the properties, because it was really important to us that there was a continuity of service and that the properties continued to be maintained. So HopeLink will continue to partner with Atain to see to it that the services are moving forward. So that was, that's plan number one, to enter into a program management agreement. Number two in the plan would be to find a partner that would merge with Atain or acquire the assets. And as a matter of fact, HopeLink is intending to acquire the assets as a part of this program management agreement, and has told me they have every confidence that they will actually see through that acquisition. So that's, that's the second phase of this plan.
Great. Well, good. I mean, it's helpful to understand, you know, kind of what work is, that you're taking to address these issues and find that partner. So it's good to hear that's hoping. For the rest of my colleagues, you know, we were being asked to review, I mean, approve a fiscal note, and I felt that I was, I personally was having some uncomfortable, I was uncomfortable with that without having a statement of why we're doing it and kind of our expectations of how this money will be utilized and some of the information that we'd like to see if this grant was to be not paid back. And so I asked the city manager and the city attorney to draft a resolution that essentially kind of put all of that into writing so that, you know, we're using taxpayer dollars here, and I just want to make sure that, that we're clearly articulating kind of expectations on how it's being used and expectations kind of moving forward. So I felt like a resolution was most appropriate. So it contains three sections. The first is approving the fiscal note. The second section is, is about using it to, basically using it as a grant to maintain all 32 units and then to secure a lien for one of the properties. And then the third is how that grant would be paid off or forgiven, you know, with additional work in terms of providing information, management plan, budget, and how those units would be maintained through a recorded covenant as low-income housing. So a lot of what was in the memo but put into a resolution. So I'd like to, I'd like to move Resolution 5625.
Second? All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Pascal to pass Resolution 5625, second by Councilmember Falcone. Any further discussion, Councilmember Sweet?
Go ahead, Councilmember Sweet. Sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm really excited that you were able to announce the HopeLink partnership this evening, and I'm really excited as a board member on HopeLink's board that we're going to be able to do this, because I really believe that is a partnership that had to happen with an organization that has as much effect in Kirkland as we have. I've been a follower of Atain's for my whole 40-plus years here in Kirkland, and I just want to remind people that the Petter houses are here. Bill Petter was an absolute institution in this community for many, many years. He gave, he gave his heart to people in trouble, and I don't think we could afford not to be in charge of the Petter houses. So a little bit of an emotional plea for something that I feel is really dear to Kirkland. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen, did you have a question on the resolution?
Are we going to continue this discussion, or I have, I have a question for the city manager.
Go ahead.
If we provide, so I'm going to assume Atain Housing knew about these shortfalls sometimes in 2023, brought you on January of 2024, and told us about this in March of '24. So my question is, if we provide this grant, do we have any transparency into Atain Housing's financial, ongoing financial situation, looking at their books, looking at their financial situation if we provide this money? Or are we providing a grant and then we can't look into? Or are we providing a grant, and then we can't look into their books, financial situations, accounting, or what's going on there?
I've actually already spoken with Brian about this. We would be, between now and the end of the month when we execute the agreement, as part of the development agreement, we'd look at all the financials. I guess I want to state, though, that the intent is essentially for attain to go away, right? So, well, evolve into HopeLink. So, while obviously all of us are unhappy with how we got to this situation, what may have happened, the point is not to just continue as is. So this isn't just money to keep them going, this is really money to transition. But yes, we will go over the financials with them and understand what's happening. And that's also going to be essential for anyone who takes them over as well, or that they partner with as well. So we'll make sure that that does occur before we sign anything.
Well, thank you. I think that not only an initial review of their financials, but also ongoing review of their financials until the transition is complete is appropriate. We have to be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars, and $168,000 is not, not nothing. And I'm also concerned that $168,000 won't be enough, and there'll be additional requests down the road. Thank you.
Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, we care about keeping people housed, right? It's the right thing to do morally and ethically, just from a human perspective. It's the right thing to do financially. We know that it makes more economic sense to help keep people housed than to rehouse people once they are unhoused. So I really want to thank Arch, both the board and the staff, thank HopeLink, both the board and the staff, and attain housing, both the board and the staff, for really, and city of Kirkland staff, for keeping our focus on the needs of those most in need in our community, and not looking backwards but looking forward as to what can we do now to keep this, these really important assets in our community for those most in need. So I just want to say thank you, and I will support this.
Thank you. Any, Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate this discussion. Because we've had such a robust discussion, I did want to sort of share, you know, my thinking to members of the public and my colleagues about why I'm going to be supporting this. A lot, I share the concerns about good stewardship of the taxpayer dollars. I appreciated conversations that I was able to have with city manager earlier today, and really got my concerns about this investment answered. And I, you know, just a little, I guess, echo what Councilmember Falcone was already shared. The, you know, this is a small price to pay, considering what these housing units would cost if we had to acquire them today. There are families living there that if these units are sold to developer and they're redeveloped, are not going to be able to afford to live there. And in fact, some or all the units may actually be torn down and redeveloped. So, you know, I'm cognizant of the good stewardship question, but I'm also really thinking about what it means to keep these families housed and the emergency that would arise if there wasn't a solution to keep these units as affordable units in our community. And with all of the effort and the work that we do to encourage the development and increase in development of affordable housing units, I think it's, it's a small price to pay to preserve these 29 units that we have. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank Councilmember Pascal for bringing forward the resolution to memorialize a lot of things and just call people's attention to Section 3 that talks about the requirements that the city review, a management plan, an updated budget, and approve it. And I think that addresses the concerns that I'm hearing from Councilmember Tim Chisholm. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also be supporting this resolution. I cannot say it better than it's already been said. Affordable housing, we can't afford to lose these units in Kirkland. As Councilmember Black just said, it is a small price to pay. So, question is on the Resolution 5625. Mr. Tim Chisholm?
Thank you. I agree these units are essential to keep, and I'd like the city of Kirkland to think about how we're going to partner with the future entity that takes over these units and how we're going to keep in excellent, excellent communication with whatever future entity takes it over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. The question is on the Resolution 5625 relating to attain housing and $168,000 grant from Kirkland to attain housing to preserve existing assets as affordable housing and avoid displacing current residents. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, resolution carries, seven zero. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving on to Item 9E, Draft 25 to 30 CIP Priorities. City Manager?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I want to point out tonight's is discussion only. We're not looking for final action tonight, but we're looking for council's feedback on setting policy principles for prioritizing our capital improvement project. The reason we come to you early in our budget process, to get your sort of priority principles, is that you won't actually see the capital budget till October, and we'll be developing it between now and then. We want to make sure that you get a chance to share your parties with us. So here to walk you through that is Kevin Pellstring, our Financial Planning Supervisor.
Thank you, City Manager.
Kevin, you didn't bring your family this time.
Only for special occasions.
They're watching.
Of course, always. They're always up at any hours required to see me present to council. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, thanks very much for saving time for me tonight, this evening. Good evening. We have a short presentation for you tonight. This is the first presentation for the 252030 CIP. As many of you may remember, every two years at the onset of the CIP, staff drafts a list of council priorities that we bring to you all to give feedback on, which lays the foundation for the rest of the CIP process and serves as the fundamentals of how we develop the six-year funded CIP. So we have a list of eight priorities tonight. And again, as City Manager mentioned, we're not looking for council action tonight, just want some feedback, comments, amendments, and we'll come back to you at the next council meeting on April 2nd with an updated resolution for you all to adopt. We have eight tonight. They're all lettered, not numbered, because they're not in any particular order of priority. But they, I would say, one thing to note is that this will be a particularly interesting CIP process because of the recent and ongoing comprehensive plan and strategic planning processes going on with the 2022 PROS Plan, the 23 Surface Water Strategic Plan, the General Sewer Plan, the Transportation Strategic Plan, the Water System Plan, and the recent Facilities Condition Assessment. So I just wanted to remember, show off that I could rattle all those off at once. But it will be a particularly interesting process to make sure that we receive feedback and all of the prioritization from each of those processes and integrate it into the CIP that we bring you throughout the year and is adopted in December. So with that, we'll start jumping into it. And I'll go through all of them quickly with some, some details, and then we'll leave some time at the end to get your feedback. And again, we'll come back on April 2nd. But this is in regards to Resolution 5622, which has eight different principles here for the priorities of the CIP. So Item A is to complete capital projects in the 2023-24 City Work Plan, and those include the One Need a Drive and 100th Avenue Northeast multimodal projects, in addition to the Safer Routes to School Active Transportation Plan, Vision Zero projects, that are all incorporated in the Transportation Benefit District suite of projects in the CIP. Item B is to complete the public safety capital investments that implement voter-approved 2018 Police Prop 1 and the Fire and AMS 2020 Prop 1. The focus of that will be completing the open fire station projects and especially the renovation of Fire Station 21 and 26. Also, to expand the medical facilities in the Kirkland Jail to facilitate opioid and substance abuse screening and treatment programs. Item C is to identify and complete utility and transportation projects necessary to ensure the success of WashDOT and Sound Transit Investments in I of 405 in Kirkland. As you well know, the Sound Transit and WashDOT have invested hundreds of millions of dollars in these projects that are aimed to be complete, I believe, in 2027. So this is about prioritizing projects from the Northeast, the Northeast 85th Station Area Plan process to make sure that we are driving growth in the area around the Bus Rapid Transit Station, especially as development kind of ebbs and flows there. Item D is to complete projects necessary to ensure adequate transportation concurrency investments, keep pace with development. So we are doing, in addition to the Transportation Strategic Plan, we are doing an update to our impact fees this year. So between both of those, we should have a lot of good information on the concurrency credits and capacity that come from all of the projects that are going into our six-year CIP. But big ones for the next six years include the One Need a Drive, 100th Avenue Northeast, and the 124th Avenue Northeast projects. All right. So Item E is to invest in park projects that maintain current facilities and increase active recreation opportunities throughout the city to meet the needs of a growing population. So this is really focusing on renovating and maintaining current facilities, including the Marina Park docks and the complete park improvement projects that meet the level of service goals in the 2022 PROS Plan. Item F is investing in water, sewer, and stormwater projects according to the priorities contained in the adopted utility strategic plans. The big ones that are coming in the next couple of years are the completion of a pilot for West of Market Sewer and the pre-design of the South Reservoir replacement or renovation options, as well as planning for preventative maintenance of the city's aging pipe network, the system's aging pipes and network. We'll get a lot more information on these priorities as we continue on the General Sewer Plan and the Water System Plan and continue to deliver on the recent Storm Water Strategic Plan. Item G is to invest in sustainable and proactive plans to maintain and replace critical city and facility infrastructure. So we're wrapping up the Facilities Condition Assessment. That has given us a ton of good information about the condition of our facilities and all of our city infrastructure, and staff is working on building out a sustainable sinking fund model that looks at how do we maintain and plan for the renovation of these facilities over the next 20-plus years. And finally, to create measurable progress towards achieving the city council's 11 goals. So this one's usually involved, usually included. This year, I've asked the departments to connect each of the proposed funded CIP projects to the city council's 11 goals. So similar to what we do with the service packages, hopefully we can come out with on our project sheets, we'll include some information about which goals each of those projects is working towards fulfilling. All right. So leave some time for you all to provide feedback, comments, amendments. Again, our recommendation is to approve Resolution 5622 at the next meeting with any amendments. And then you'll see the other important CIP study session dates this year. September 3rd is the first one, and then we'll adopt the final 2025-2030 CIP on December 10th, along with the budget. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Any feedback discussion? Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you. Yeah, so just a few pieces of feedback as this comes back as a resolution. There was a few comments I had. The one is on a letter D, has to do with...
Scroll back, Kevin.
Complete projects necessary to ensure adequate transportation concurrency and keep pace with development. I'm just wondering if that could be a little bit more broad to be, to focus on projects necessary to achieve our land use and sustainability goals or something like that around our growth areas. Concurrenty is very limiting sometimes to the types of projects, and I'd like it to be more broad in terms of the projects necessary to achieve our land use goals. That's, that's something that I'd like to take...
I think that, I think we can figure that out pretty straightforwardly. And the city work program talks about the comprehensive plan, and those are kind of links, so I think we could pull out something that achieves that and what we come back with.
Okay. The other one that caught my attention was F. This was, this is one that talked about the water and sewer and stormwater projects according to priorities contained in the various strategic plans. There isn't a similar one for transportation in terms of transportation projects according to our priorities in the Transportation Strategic Plan and the Active Transportation Plan and the Vision Zero Plan. We mentioned that in the first one, but that only has to do with the next two-year projects. It's not kind of looking more broadly. So I'm wondering if either modify an existing one or include something broad, so at least we're thinking about and...
I know, that makes sense. The, again, you're right, the catch-all of the strategic, of the city work program implied all that, but I think it's pretty straightforward to make that more specific, because adopting the strategic plan was one of the work program items, but then that would have a six-year CIP. So I think that's a straightforward correction or addition that we can make.
Those are just the two things that caught my attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, very good comments from Councilmember Pascal. I really appreciate those two things. And the only other thing I would add, I would just refer to some of the conversation we had during the study session around Transportation Strategic Plan and just, you know, one of the things I was looking for is, you know, where in here are we prioritizing the work that needs to be done to, to build the infrastructure necessary for future transit? But I think in Councilmember Pascal's first item, sort of planning for the land use, transportation planning for the land use planning that we're doing, I think it captures that. So I appreciate that, but I would also just, yeah, refer back to the importance of the conversations we had and the importance of regional transit work and regional transit infrastructure. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, you got a feasy.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you all very much.
All right. We are at our final agenda item, which is 9F, the Leadership Eastside Fiscal Note.
So, yeah, so obviously, we don't have a formal presentation, since this was on consent, but the item before you would give $10,000, be approving a fiscal note to provide $10,000 to Leadership Eastside for 2024, but not for 2025 or 2026. I think there's a question about that second part.
All right. Councilmember Tim Chisholm?
Thank you. I just had a brief concern here. When I looked at the document that had been created, you know, I wanted to make sure this document was clear. We voted on a one-time $10,000 grant. I voted for it. But the document says, you know, discussions on supporting during the 2025-26, it talks about 25-26, and the description of the request says that this is for 2024. My concern is that this signals to the organization that we're going to fund them in '25 and '26, and signals to the organization that this is going to be ongoing for three years and commit us to ongoing money that comes out of the City Council Special Operations Fund. And I wanted to ensure that it was clear that we're making a one-time grant. I don't see the one-time, any language that indicates this is a one-time grant in this document, and I just wanted to ask the city manager about that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Tim Chisholm. So, yes, that is the intent, if we weren't totally clear. So using the council's special projects reserve, the fiscal note only authorizes $10,000, so that makes it a one-time, so if you approve the fiscal note. When the Eastside, Leadership Eastside sent their letter, they actually did request three years. They asked for 2024, and then they asked for $10,000, about 25... for 2024, and then they asked for $10,000 about 25 and 26. And when we talked about it last time, I said that we would take the future recommendation, and we'd do it as part of the budget process. So, the clarity to provide is saying we'll evaluate as part of the budget process, not saying that we're going to do it. It means it's going to be compared to all the other priorities and suggestions from the community, and then we'll make a recommendation to the council. And then you get a chance to evaluate that and decide whether or not you agree with the city manager's recommendation. So, but to be very clear tonight, this doesn't commit us to 25-26 funding for Leadership Eastside, but that was their request, that we do consider that in the future. So, that's definitely something we'll be looking at as we develop the budget.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any motions or...
Does that answer your question? Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the fiscal note for a one-time use of $10,000 from Council Special Projects Fund, Special Projects Reserve, to support the work of Leadership Eastside in 2024.
Second.
Okay. It has been, I have a question for city manager before I call for a vote. Leadership Eastside will be obligated to come to us with a request for the 25-26 budget. We don't automatically program this request from their initial outreach.
We do not, no.
Okay.
So, so as I was explaining to Councilmember Tim Chisen earlier, so we get lots of requests.
Yeah.
And some come directly to the council, and some come directly to staff. So, we, in the budget development process, we assess all of those, and then we bring to you our recommendations, and we explain why we did or didn't do something. Yeah, but this is not, we're not automatically doing it just...
No, 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 that's not my question. Yeah, I know we wouldn't automatically approve it. My question is, what is their required step to ask for a budget item in, in 25-26?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily require something different than the letter that they sent.
That's what I'm asking. Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily do that.
Thank you, that helps. Councilmember Sweet?
Just a comment. I mean, this is the way we'd handle one-time funding.
It is.
So, so I, I think the consideration of, of including it as, as budget deliberations into the future was, was rightly intended. Just needing to understand what LE needs to do in order to comply.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, questions on the motion to approve the fiscal note for $10,000 for Leadership Eastside made by Councilmember Falcone, second by Councilmember Tim Chisen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are now on to reports. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One thing to report, on Wednesday, March 6th, the mayor and I attended the public hearing that King County had at Lake Washington High School for the Northeast Regional Transfer Station. There was also a virtual public hearing the next day that I attended, and that's on the county's website if anybody missed it. The county did an innovative job in a public hearing instead of what traditionally I thought of, which is a big room and people coming up and offering testimony. It was more informal and informational, and you could talk to staff members, and then people that wanted to make comments could make comments in a variety of different ways. So, I thought that was an interesting opportunity, and also it was just made for more opportunity for individual conversations with constituents, and the mayor and I had a number of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Pascal?
Well, the only, two things to report on. One is, I'm going to have my first Transportation Improvement Board meeting this week. They're two, two-day meetings, so, up in Squim. And, yeah, I was thinking, should I take the weekend? But no, I get to be back on Friday for the Finn Hill Neighborhood Alliance Happy Hour with Mayor Curtis at One Need a Cantina. And for my colleagues, we're the two guinea pigs to start, and they'll be inviting you to future ones, is the, assuming this works well. Or, or it could be, or it could be something different, yeah. So, we'll, we'll see. So, that's 4:30 to 6:00 on Friday. Thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, hopefully, in the future, the city will be hosting our Coffee with Council, and we will be able to do that in that manner as well. Few things to report on, a couple weeks ago, attended the SCA Networking Dinner in Renton. The reason that I mention this is because I know that's a long drive. It was a long drive for me. I carpooled with some folks from some other cities as well. And as a board member representing the North Caucus of SCA, I want you to know that I've been advocating for more local events and other board members as well. So, we're working on that, about having not only, like, SCA-wide events kind of move around the county, and also having hyper-local events, like just for, like, North Caucus cities, or Eastside cities, or whatever. So, I just want you to know, give you a heads up, and you'll be getting invitations for those once we actually get those scheduled. But we are working on that, so stay tuned. Wanted to give a huge kudos and congratulations to our deputy city manager Julie Underwood and the whole team who put on the second annual Kirkland's Women's Leadership Summit. It was fantastic, again. I mean, it was, room was packed, very inspirational, very moving, folks really connected and learned so much. It was just amazing. So, thank you for your leadership on that, and to everyone who helped with that. I know that was a team effort, so that goes to the whole team that worked on that. Also, had the opportunity, I almost said Mayor Sweet. Wow, it's been a few months, and Mayor Curtis and I attended the Kirkland Fire Promotion and Retirement Ceremony last Friday. It was always so special and so moving to see family members, to see, you know, colleagues support one another. I think there was almost 100 years of the, of the folks that were retiring, almost 100 years of service among just a few folks to the city of Kirkland. That was huge. It was, I know, I certainly, my, I teared up a little bit seeing, like, some little ones pin, you know, pin the pins on their, on their parents. That was a pretty special ceremony. It was an honor to be able to be there to witness it. Have coming up Friday, the NAMI Eastside Youth Mental Health Conference, looking forward to that. Also, the Kirkland Art Center has their opening on Friday of their new exhibit, Like Mother. It's a busy day on Friday. Also have the Eastside Native American Education Program Auction at Lake Washington High School. There are lots of other really cool stuff coming up, but those are some of the highlights. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I do have my list. Attended my first ETP meeting. Three people from Kirkland were in that meeting. So, that was pretty impressive. I'm glad to be represented by two such capable people. I'll, I'll do what I can and clean up. Cascade Water Alliance Finance and Management Committee meeting was this afternoon, where we are actually talking in terms, well, we're getting ready to do rate setting again. So, and unfortunately, things don't look that good, but it will make a big difference in terms of whether we make the decision for Seattle or Tacoma. And they're doing the projections on those numbers now, so we will have them. Councilmember Falcone and I were able to host Leadership Eastside in chambers all day long on Thursday, last week, anyway. It was a fascinating group. It is, it was a great exercise. It was about land use. Luncheon, sorry. Last week, I think we do need to make more of an effort to attend chamber luncheons. I was the only one of us there. It wasn't really well-attended, but I think we at least need to make sure somebody is there for each one of those meetings. Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
We'll be talking to Amy about making sure we're on the list.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Women's Leadership. Oh, at Mizwak, we are having some fairly interesting discussions about the long-term disposal thinking and where we're going with this. The leadership group, that's myself and the leader of the SWAC group, who is Wendy Weaker, met with our vice chairs and with the division to raise some concerns that came from staff. Julie has been very involved, or not Julie, Jenna has been very involved in those discussions. And, and the feedback has been incredibly consistent for everyone with regard to how we're going to proceed toward a decision, because the way that the county frames it is, it will be a director decision. It will not be a decision made by the members. We're pushing back on that, and we're getting really good cooperation from the division in terms of listening to us. We have a follow-up session scheduled with the small working group in a few days. Finally, I had an interesting follow-up meeting with the Seattle folks who proposed the Seattle water, what do I want to say? Their proposal for water for us for the future, the same one that we talked about at our last meeting. Met with Andrew Lee and Lloyd Weber, or Lloyd, what's Lloyd's last name?
Warren.
I can't remember Lloyd's last name from some mammoth, but...
Lloyd Warren.
Say that again.
Is that Lloyd Warren?
No. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, it doesn't matter. He was in deep negotiations with Seattle all the way back to when we were first talking about reclaimed water. Andrew came to us at Cascade and essentially sat down and, and made an apology for the proposal that Seattle made when we had the proposals presented between Seattle and Tacoma, apologized for Seattle's reaction to it. He wasn't asking us for anything. That was simply what he wanted to do. So, it was a very interesting approach for Seattle to take after however many years of them not even wanting us to be in existence. And that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, three items quickly. First, just a real quick mention, Councilmember Sweet, already mentioned about Eastside Transportation Partnership, but what was cool about it was we did it in person for the first time since 2020. And it was actually really cool to sort of be in a room with all our, our colleagues on other councils. And it was neat, because we kind of, we did kind of a roundtable discussion of what each council members and mayors and deputy mayors sort of priorities were. And you heard some of the, you know, same issues that we've been talking about with, with planning for a future where there's more housing, where there's a greater mix of different housing types, and planning for that transit future, and multimodal transportation. So, that was neat. Tomorrow, I am having my second meeting of the Regional Transit Committee, and I'm just wanted to highlight that we're going to be talking about rapid ride line prioritization, which Councilmember Pascal's down there nodding, because he knows every six months they talk about rapid line prioritization. So, I'll get to hear a little bit more about the plans for the K-line, which we know is important to us here in Kirkland, and we have a lot of conversations about that regionally. But it remains on the priority list, and it remains on the list for, you know, adoption, implementation between, sometime between 2026 and 2030, according to the, the meeting materials for tomorrow. So, that's exciting. And the last thing, on, on Thursday, the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, I'll be officially elected unless something goes terribly wrong. I'll be elected as the vice chair of the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, which means I'll be the chair of the Regional Law, Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee in 2025. And there's actually, we're going to have a presentation from law enforcement, actually, about what some of the recent legislation around vehicle pursuits means for law enforcement. So, that'll be an interesting conversation, as it always is. And if there's anything particularly interesting about the K-line, or anything particularly interesting about vehicle pursuits, I'll be certain to share that. Oh, one last thing. I did, the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee received a presentation from county staff on the crisis care clinic planning, you know, following up on the crisis care levy that was adopted at the county level, and got some really good questions from members of the, of the Sound City Association, some of our fellow elected. And the county staff was really good about responding to those. And I've been sharing, I've been sharing those with our staff and including our racer agency director, because that crisis care plan now includes mobile crisis response. And so, understanding, I think it's important for Kirkland in particular, because we've led on mobile crisis response, and because we've led on crisis care clinic, to understand what the county has planned and how it dovetails with what we're already doing. So, just know that I, when I'm getting that information and getting those responses from county, I am sharing them with the key staff who needs to be thinking about that. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Two quick items. I met with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm super excited. They have a new executive director, Jessica Hoover. I think we should do everything we can to facilitate a closer relationship with the, with the chamber, now that we have a permanent executive director there. And item number two, I attended my first disability board meeting, myself and Councilmember Black, provided much-needed medical aid to our retired police officers and firefighters, and that is it.
Thank you. All of my items have been covered, though I will say that apparently part of firefighter training is to give really good retirement speeches, because they were all very moving. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is true. So, I just have one item that actually turns into several items. So, that item is, as the arch board member and chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, I want to let you know that at the last arch board meeting, the board approved our strategic plan. We'll be now sending that to all the member cities, so it will come to the city council the next couple of meetings. Just a brief reminder, the strategic plan was based on the idea of practical proactive action and building more housing faster. So, the reason I want to bring that up, not only just because you're going to see it, but one of the two things that are sort of big investments in the strategic plan is recommending that we fund a specialist for unique projects that emerge from individual cities, and primarily related around things like church properties or other properties that aren't, we don't know they're coming and they sort of pop up. And so, how can we have somebody who can, like, seize those opportunities and develop housing with them? So, on that note, I just want to let you know that there's three conversations that have come to Kirkland, kind of in this realm. The first one, members of the Planning Department and I, and Deputy City Manager Jim Lopez, we met with Jawad Kaki. The Iman Center is actually looking to renovate and redevelop. And they're not actually looking for housing, but they actually are wanting to create a new community space in their redevelopment. They're actually going to expand the footprint. They're not going to expand the height, but they have a really cool vision, and they want to know that they really want to trade, to create a, a new way to engage the community and provide a space on behalf of the community. So, that's going to be working its way through the process, and it was, that was pretty cool. Secondly, I know we already had a, talked about this briefly, but the North Lake Unitarian Universalist Church met with the mayor and is interested in exploring the idea of housing on that site. Hasn't gone much further than that, but it's out there. And then, as Councilmember Pascal knows, the Salt House Church is also starting to assess whether they want to use the parsonage or other parts of their property for something like this. So, these things are sort of bubbling up in Kirkland, and similar things are bubbling up around the other cities as well. So, that'll work really nicely with our strategic plan, but you're going to get more on that in the future. So, just want to see if anyone had any questions on any of that.
It doesn't look like it.
And then, any calendar items for the future, before I wrap up?
Councilmember Black is going to be remote next week for the...
Boards and commission interviews?
Board and commission interviews.
Okay. So, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Awesome. Well, we've passed 10 o'clock, so we are not going to do our second items of the audience. I know you're disappointed. We do not have an executive session this evening. So, thank you, everyone, for your time, your attention, and hard work. We are adjourned.